Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee, Court.
Thank you. I will call the Concord Public Schools School Committee to order and note that we are being recorded and ask for the roll call, please.
Anderson, present.
Booth, present.
Present.
Miss Dad, present. Rainey, present.
Wilson, present.
And I think Eva will be joining us shortly and be on camera soon. We may have a point at which we ask certain people in the audience to close out their camera, but it looks like we're all set for the present time. Before we get into public comment, I would like us to turn our attention for a minute to our colleague Fatima. I think you had some remarks for us tonight.
Yes, I have a statement that I would like to read. I'd like to acknowledge a difference in the way that I present myself this evening and going forward. I have always said publicly that I am Muslim. But that part of my identity, I didn't wear on my sleeve or on my head. There are many reasons for that. One of those reasons was that I was afraid of bias, of prejudice. I felt that it was my responsibility to protect myself from prejudice. So I lived my life as an incognito Muslim, at least in appearance. Today, I understand that if someone is biased against me, it is not my fault. It is not my responsibility. Today, I found the courage to show up. Many who don't understand why Muslim women wear the headscarf, the hijab. It has been perceived as a suppression of freedom. I have never felt as free as I do at this moment. I find it liberating. I answered present to the roll call and I've never been more present than tonight. Vailing myself this evening feels like unveiling. Unveiling one of the layers among many of my identity. I have lived in America for 25 years. As an immigrant Muslim woman. I have been raising a family in America for 17 of those years. I have acquired along the way, a set of experiences that have forged me, made me who I am today. Who I was meant to be. The town of Concord was meant to be my home. And I have arrived. I come with the gift of those experiences that I offer to this beautiful community. Discrimination and hate stem in part from fear. Fear of the unknown. We are biologically hardwired to fear the unknown, the unfamiliar. That's how we made it so far as a species. We will eradicate this fear by becoming familiar with that which is unknown. There isn't an existential threat when minorities take their seat at the table. On June 11, 2020. This community made me the first Muslim elected official in the history of Concord. I like to call it the vote heard around the world. Saying loud and clear. That we are committed together to diversity, equity, and anti-racism. Thank you.
Fatima, thank you. I think I speak for the committee. I hope I do. I believe I do when I say, "Thank you." I think it's appropriate that we all sit with your words. That was not an invitation for a discussion. It was instead a statement and an expression. And I thank you for that on behalf of the committee. Sarah, with that, I'd like to move on to recognitions, if I may.
That sounds good. Thank you.
This, in some communities, might seem to be an odd juxtaposition, but in Concord and Carlisle, it's not. The recognition I want to bring forth tonight is to Police Officer Kevin Jenna. Kevin was a member of the Concord Police Department and a, an essential and valuable member of the Concord Middle School. Faculty or staff, I should say. An integral part of that community, trusted and beloved by students and teachers alike. And brought, in his own way, his diverse experiences into our middle school and enriched the lives of students and teachers. He's had good fortune to return to his hometown of Lynn, which was his desire, one of his career goals, to serve his original community. And he's advanced and is now doing that. But as he departs, we want to formally recognize the contributions he made to both the public schools and the wider community. So thank you, Kevin. His, his service leaves a big gap, but we're very fortunate to have a very sensitive, capable crew of people in our police department, led by Chief O'Connor. No stranger to people who advocate for human rights and human dignities in this town, as well as safety, of course. And through Chief O'Connor, we're fortunate to have Tina Mancuso, now representing the police department as our school resource officer, covering a lot of territory now because she's at the middle school and the high school. And she's wherever she is needed. And to know Tina is to know that she is somebody who could rival Kevin in his, in her, in her ability, her capacity to listen, to hear, to support kids in need and families in need. So we're, I think, more than grateful and fortunate to have Tina among us. And returning back to Kevin, once again, thank you, Kevin. Sarah, I think that's the only recognition we have this evening. Am I correct?
I believe so. So I think, move on to the reading of the minutes.
So a quick interruption. I think we skipped public comments.
Oh, forgive me. I'm very sorry. Glad you're, glad you're watching. We're looking at a lot of things here, Cynthia. I do apologize, you know. My mistake entirely. So sorry, Sarah. Could we open it up for public comments? We're going to look at the participant list and ask for a raised hand so that we can recognize you, please.
Erin Fife.
Erin, if you'd be good enough to turn on your camera, then welcome. Could you state your name and address, please?
Thank you very much. My name is Erin Fife and my address is 174 Hill Street. And I just wanted to ask if there would be time for public questions after Dr. Hunter's presentation tonight?
So it's not generally the rule because it's a business meeting, but if it is very germane to the presentation, we will certainly honor that request and request that you be brief in your remarks, given the extent of the business we're trying to conduct tonight. But let me make that answer short. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Court, are we clear on which presentation?
Yes, that would be in reference to, in the, in the joint meeting, the items seven, diversity in hiring. Thank you, Cynthia. That's why she's the vice chair, soon to replace me.
And with that, we can move on to the reading of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the joint meetings of November 17th, December 1st, December 8th, and December 15th.
So moved from both committees.
Back and for both? Anderson, I.
Discussion? Yeah, thanks as always.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Miss Dad, I for both. Rainey, I for both.
Wilson, I for region. Thank you. And so we can move on to chairs and liaisons reports. And we have, we're lucky to have tonight, our student update. So Court, can we begin with Amy and Linda?
Yes, please. Yes, thank you so much for being here. For those of us new to the meeting and the meeting format, Amy and Linda represent the high school and bring us a report from the high school. And questions or comments or recommendations or concerns they might have for the school committee. Welcome.
Hi. So one thing that's happening now is this is something very new with CC Theater is we're going to be doing a radio play. I don't really know the details of that yet because it's just, I think it's just starting and we have like a meeting on Friday. But over the winter, we're going to try to have some kind of recorded play over the radio.
And something else that Amy and I wanted to bring up had to do with current events. I'm sure everyone in this meeting is aware of what took place at the U.S. Capitol Building. And on a student's perspective, for a lot of us high schoolers, we, I mean, throughout 2020 and I guess now 2021, we faced so many current events that were just really unimaginable. And I guess throughout it all, a lot of us students were just kind of thinking, well, you know, I still have to do school. I still have to do my homework. I remember that night, I was texting with some of my friends and they even said, "Am I expected to do my homework?" Because I can't look away from the title. I can't look away from the TV. Amy and I both had a calculus test the next day, so.
It's kind of hard to, especially around big things like that. It was a little bit hard to like farm stuff away from the news and like start studying for tests or doing other homework.
Yeah, and I think the next day, Amy and I are lucky that we both take presidency and that's a great class. And it's also, it is, you know, the most prevalent class to talk about current events rather than a math class, per se. There were some teachers who were trying to initiate conversation, but I think the overall reaction of a lot of students was that they weren't really able to process it for themselves. So talking about it in, you know, in class, trying to get initiated conversation, especially when half the students are on Zoom, was kind of a little awkward. And, you know, but it was by no means a normal Wednesday. And I think some students just, you know, I don't think everyone's really processed what happened. And I just want to bring that up just because I think all of us students have just faced something that's a little out of the ordinary when it comes to current events. And who knows of whether or not it's going to continue happening. So just something on the radar.
Did you find the teachers capable of navigating that very difficult space and supporting you?
I think for the most, most part, I feel like, I think especially because the class I talked about the most in was definitely my presidency class. And that's since I took like a history and politics class, that kind of does fit in very well. So I think in stuff like that, it definitely was, we were able, definitely able to like navigate through it and have a good discussion about it.
Yeah, and I will say that my English teacher tried to, since she is my first class in the morning, she did try to initiate something that says like, if you want to, if we can schedule some time to talk. Because I think typically if it was a normal school year, everyone would come in that morning and they would start talking about it in the hallway, saying like, "Did you see CNN last night? Did you see the Washington Post livestream?", whatever it may be. But because, you know, so many kids are just still in their homes, they still need to just process it on their own. And I think it's really difficult to try to get support from it when I don't think like people know how to even process it.
So it was a lesson not only in current events, but in processing.
Probably, yeah.
Other items? No? Okay. Questions, comments for our high school delegates?
I just appreciate Amy and Linda for the forthrightness that you brought. Because I think, you know, we, we don't know how, how the students are processing all of this. So that was, was good to hear from your own perspective and the perspective of your friends. It is something we are all processing, but yeah. And I'm looking forward to the radio play.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Other chairs and liaisons reports. I don't have any. Court?
I'm going to fold mine into correspondence. I think that'll suffice for tonight.
Okay. Cynthia, do you have a?
Well, we're going to see a similar presentation that the FinCom and Concord saw last Thursday. So I'll let that, that'll suffice. And there was a, a last select board, I didn't catch all of this select board meeting. There was a brief conversation about CARES Act expenditures by the town of Concord. So those would probably be similar to the presentation we'll see tonight for the school side. So that's it.
Does anybody else? About the middle school building project later in the evening, so we won't get into that now.
So Fatima? Eva? No? Okay.
We did, we did mention, we did go over our subcommittee for policy. And our next one is scheduled for January 20.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to, you want to roll in your?
Okay, for correspondence. I'll represent the Concord Public Schools and say that Concord and the region received a letter from a community group, Concord Organized Against Racism, in regard to an appeal to consider some of their objectives, which might well overlap with those of the schools in next year's budget. We, and so that will be part of budget conversations, very public, of course. We received a correspondence from a community member representing Safe Roots to School. This is a walking and biking advocacy group that works with the State Department of Transportation. They're in closer touch with Dr. Hunter than they are with us, but we're kept informed there. I represented the Concord Schools in two conversations with members of the FinCom and clarified the contract negotiation schedule for the, for the FinCom, what we know about the calendar for negotiations coming up. And we received a letter in regard to student and teacher COVID testing and ideas about how that might get more attention. And we're getting into that again tonight. And more recently, a letter that was certainly appropriately addressed to us, but because it regards the new middle school building project, should also be addressed to the town's middle school committee. The school building committee, because it is a town project, notwithstanding the fact that it is a school. And this was in regard to electromagnetic frequencies. And I think that was it on my side. And I think you had at least one region, if I'm correct.
I had one, one regional correspondence and it was a reporter from Patch who was inquiring about how the school was addressing the events of last week. And she was referred to Kristen, who had a very nice interview with her. Thank you. And that is on the web, if anyone wants to see it. I think Lori, you've posted the, the link as well, I believe.
I've shared it in a few spots. I could be more thorough about it, I'm sure, but we've seen it.
And that was, and that was it for correspondence. It's a quiet, on that front, it was a quiet week. So I think then we can move on to the, to the diversity and hiring update, if that's.
Sarah, could I just give the update on Concord Carlisle Adult Education Advisory Committee meeting?
Yeah.
Sorry, had some difficulty logging in here. Just the upcoming meeting will be February 15 on Friday at 11 for the Concord Carlisle Advisory Committee on Adult Education. Last meeting, during the last meeting, the budget looks great. There is a healthy participation in a lot of offerings through, through the Zoom. The committee is working on bringing additional cooperation with other committee, communities, and expanding the offerings, being able to run classes that may, classes or programs that may not have filled out. Didn't have enough participation and now they can run that. Let's see, what else do we have? And they are working on the upcoming ideas of, on topics for Can We Talk?, the bulletin with offerings. It's in the mail, so lots of great classes and programs to take advantage of over the winter. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I just quickly acknowledge, one of the programs at the Adults and Continuing Education Concord Carlisle, they are offering amongst their programs, a, in the speaker series that they are offering, part on mystic poetry. And that's something that I'm very interested in is also drawing the connection with, with the intellectual history of, of our town. So this speaker series, they call Lovers, Mystics, and Madmen. It's going to be on Wednesday evenings and I'm super excited to attend.
Thank you. Okay, so with, with that, I think we are going to ask you, Dr. Hunter, to lead. I know that you have brought several people our way. Thank you very much. I know you'll introduce them, so I won't try to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we are continuing, I guess what's turning into a series of sessions with you on our cultural competency and anti-racism work. Tonight's theme is hiring and diversity and our goals of, you know, really trying to, to hire staff of diverse backgrounds. And it really is about hiring and retaining. It's not a one-step process by any means. So this is part of the bigger picture, just to remember, there's context to each of these sessions that it's part of. It's a leg in the big picture, not the big picture in and of itself. So you've heard from the kids and staff on many of the groups that have formed and the work going on there. We're going to bring you more on professional development and you had a very extensive curriculum presentation. So this is, this is one spoke. Andrew is back to talk with you, along with Kristen and our consultant Paula Martin. So I'm going to turn it over to them and they're going to give you updates on learnings today, work today, and some of our next steps.
Thanks, Lori. Just let me ask, am I sharing my screen to show the presentation? And if so, can I be made host?
Make sure you have screen share.
Yep, she should be able to share her screen.
Thank you.
Not yet. There we go. All right. So welcome, everyone. I'm Kristen Herbert, the Director of Teaching and Learning, joined by Andrew Nemeche, our Director of Metco, and Dr. Paula Martin, our cultural competency expert and outside consultant. And as Lori said, this is the fourth, I think, presentation to you about our cultural competency work. And today we're focusing on hiring, mentoring, and retaining educators of color. So as you know, we come to this work with a shared understanding created by our district-wide cultural competency committee. We strive to be a more culturally competent community. We support our diversity of race, gender, religion, national origin, gender identity, color, ancestry, sexual orientation, and ability. By our choices and actions, we promote all members to feel recognized, respected, and valued. We have set our intention to be responsive, proactive, and empathetic to all facets of culture and diversity. The goal of continuously developing our cultural competency is that it will enable our students to develop the values, skills, and behaviors needed to effectively interact in a culturally diverse community, both locally and globally. So as you know, we have a strategic plan with four pillars. The third pillar is to create a more inclusive culture and make sure that our schools and community value diversity and recognize the unique contributions of each learner. Under that strategic initiative, we have five pillars. As Lori said, we've talked to you about the mission statement in August. We will come back in February to talk about 3.2, which is the professional development we give for our staff. 3.3 is looking at culturally responsive curriculum, which we did an update in December. And back in November, we talked about all of our ways that we've engaged with students and families and, in fact, the whole community. So we're looking for that. So today is just about hiring. Andrew?
Thank you, Kristen. So why is this work of hiring and retaining educators of color important? We know what the research says, that all students benefit from having teachers of color in their classroom. And that's especially true for students of color. Leah Shaffer from the Harvard Graduate School of Education says, "One of the most, most powerful supports a school can give a student of color is a teacher of color. Understanding the experiences of teachers of color is crucial. Retaining these educators from one year to the next requires superintendents and principals to be intentionally inclusive, to hold high expectations for all staff, to provide excellent training and support, and to actively appreciate the extra mentoring and support work that teachers of color often do." I know at numerous points along my elementary and secondary path, when I had a teacher of color, I felt safe. I felt respected and I felt like I belonged. Now, as an adult, this, you know, in this profession where the majority of my colleagues do not look like me, I know that ultimately teachers of color must be represented, respected as professionals, and more importantly, as people. David, Davis Dixon of the Brookins Institute and nonprofit public policy organization in Washington, DC, says, "If we really want to diversify the workforce, the attention we pay to school climate can be for the students. The school climate in which we recruit and retain teachers of color has to be strong and positive as well." Next slide, please.
Yeah, something's happening. Hold on one sec. Sorry about that.
Additionally, for most schools recruiting and retaining teachers of color. Here we go. Additionally, our. Additionally, for more, for most schools recruiting and retaining teachers of color is the epitome of struggle. That's largely because of barriers such as school culture keep talented prospective teachers of color out of the classroom and push them out of the profession. Teachers of color often leave their schools because of three main reasons. Relationships with their supervisors, how they are treated by so-called colleagues, or the working conditions. But if the schools and the districts aren't looking at these types of patterns and understanding them, then it's willful negligence on their part, which further perpetuates a problem and will impact a teacher of color's desire to stay in this profession. In other words, increasing teacher diversity isn't just about successfully hiring more teachers of color. It's about keeping them too. This quote is from Sharif El Miki, founder and chief executive officer of the Center for Black Educator Development. So beyond hiring, we spent our last presentation on cultural competency and anti-racist education in our curriculum. We talked about mirrors and windows, how teachers are being proactive in ensuring that their students of color are reflected in their curriculum. Very similar to hiring educators of color. When students have teachers of color who reflect the world they want to be part of, we know they do better. White students typically have mirrors in front of them, lead in the classroom. And especially when teachers and the overall school environment is predominantly white, that reinforces their identity, their goals, and their aspirations. For students of color, on the other hand, often, they don't have these mirrors. They have windows. For black students, having even one black teacher can make a huge difference. You know, for me personally, you know, when I look back and sort of my education, the first educator that I believed looked like me wasn't until I reached my undergraduate studies at Westwood State University. So just to put that in a larger perspective here, you know, I went through elementary school, middle school, high school. Not a single teacher of color in those years. And so, you know, it wasn't until, you know, my undergrad studies that I was exposed to other educators of color. Lastly, I want to share with you, you know, on a national level that, you know, 53% of students are black indigenous people of color, BIPOC. Yet, 80% of teachers are white and 40% of all public schools don't have a single teacher of color.
So that's the quantitative data nationally. And now looking at the quantitative data from Concord. The number of students who identify as people of color in Concord right now at CPS is just over 25%. Interestingly, when I ran this data maybe five years ago, it was about 16%. So it's, we have grown. We've diversified in that time. And at the high school, it's almost 23%. So what we want in a faculty is a faculty that's at least more reflective of our student body. So you would want those percentages to match. But right now, at Concord Public Schools, we have just under 10% of our faculty who identify as people of color. And at the high school, just over 3%. Support staff, meaning tutors and student supervisors and so forth, just under 10% at the Concord Public Schools and just over 11% at the region. So that's the quantitative data. And then we went forth to try to get some qualitative data. And that is, we had a focus group. And we met a couple of times. We invited all the teachers of color who have been new with us within the last five years. And we talked about onboarding, what it was like to be hired, the hiring process, working with supervisors here in Concord, the school cultures, their relationships with colleagues, and what the mentoring situation was. Paula? Are you there, Paula?
I am.
Okay.
Unmuted, which I think is a good thing. Our focus groups, we chose that it's the instrument. Participants, all participants who were new teachers of color in the district were invited. 10 participants agreed to be a part of the focus group. The participants were well represented across all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Which was important because that allows us to have some kind of generalizability in terms of looking at the themes that emerged. Data was gathered from the participants in their own words and was also organized and filtered by theme. Full anonymity for participants was provided. If you see any pictures, those are stock pictures. We had several themes, 45 themes that emerged under each category. So under the data on onboard processing, two themes emerged. One was teachers chose Concord because it has a reputation as a very good school system. And the second theme that emerged was Concord had a very good formal processing process for interviewing, hiring, and orientating new staff. Some of the quotes. "I came from a similar district. Concord is well-known as a good school district. Top of the line." A second quote, "I changed school districts because I wanted a bright future, both personally and financially." Another participant said, "I love the students. I counted in the sample lesson." And finally, and not finally, we had many, many more quotes. The last quote here is, "The hiring and orientation were very smooth, warm, and professional. I loved the bus tour of the community."
Thank you, Paula. Data from the relationship on the topic of relationship with supervisors, one theme emerged, and that is that administrators are very welcoming and supportive. Some of our focus group participants said, and I quote, "Dr. Hunter was clear and direct that Concord does have racism and we are working hard to end it. She told me it wouldn't be easy as a teacher of color. My principal is very helpful. He is always asking, what can I do to help you? My evaluator is very supportive. I find I have to do less code-switching with him. He is authentic about the challenges that Concord faces. Proof of the support is the Cultural Competency Committee and even this focus group."
Another question we asked the participants was about school culture. And there were four themes that emerged from the dialogue. Representation of students and faculty of color is very important. We need to feel safe in this environment and feel safe to have hard conversations. Another theme was some colleagues need more training on cultural competency and anti-racist practices. And the last theme here is, the more faculty of color can be hired, the better the environment will be for all of us. Two quotes. One, "I love the multicultural meals, the Celtics playbook, the flags, all of it." There were even students of color in the opening day video about COVID safety precautions. And the second quote here is, "It is important to create an environment where we can feel safe to speak up, say our ideas. We need to feel relaxed in our environment."
Andrew?
So three themes emerged on the topic of working relationships with colleagues. Number one, when introducing new faculty, when they are people of color, the fact that they are highly qualified needs to be emphasized. New faculty must be encouraged to fully participate and not feel discouraged because they have not reached professional status. More professional development is needed to encourage colleagues to be open to self-reflection and change. Two quotes from members of the focus group. One, "I feel that diversity is great, but I need to feel that I belong. When we bring up changes, there needs to be positive discourse about it in a safe way for everyone involved." Three themes emerged for the topic on mentoring. The formal mentors and mentoring program is very helpful and supportive. It is helpful to have a mentor who works in the same building. When you are an educator of color, it is helpful to find an informal mentor who is a person of color. Three quotes from our participants. "She is my mentor for life. We are two peas in a pod. My mentor works with all the new elementary Spanish teachers. She is terrific, but it was hard to make friends in the building. Only now do I feel like I have friends and a professional home. I have an informal mentor who is a person of color. That has made all the difference."
So those are all the quotes from our qualitative data. Moving forward, we have met with our admin team. This group of folks working on the diversity initiatives has met. The pre-K to 12 Cultural Competency Committee has met. And we have plans to do more meetings with groups inside the school of adults to work on this issue. And so I categorized our work in kind of five areas. One is, we have a district-level hiring committee. Paula and Andrew are on it with me and Yolanda Volpe, who's in charge of mentoring and a few other people. And we're looking out, we got a lot of training for ourselves about how you hire well for a more diverse workforce. And two things that we learned is we have to get our job postings out very early so that we can cast a wider net. And then we have to cast our net in the right places. So we've joined the professional organizations that you see on the screen there to are looking for educators of color to join us. So we're trying to get out early and in the right places. And so far, so good. We've had a lot of good luck in the last three years, four years, and we hope that that will continue. And then on the interview committees themselves, what some things that the new folks told us that it really, really helped to have educators of color right on the committee. And that we provide all the committees training on what it means to be highly qualified and how do we hire and acknowledge our own biases? Because when we are looking for someone to hire, there are biases towards hiring someone that is more like ourselves. And when most of our educators are, would identify as white, then you would hire more white people. So we're really actively looking at what are those biases as we do the interviewing. And then we look at, okay, so we go through the formal process that's worked pretty well. How do we best mentor and support them? So we've already in the past two years provided training for all of our seasoned mentors on particular topics that might come up with new faculty who identify as people of color. We are looking to, when it's appropriate, match more faculty of color with mentors of color. And as we grow our staff in terms of having more educators of color, we're able to do that more and more. And then some support groups and activities like the focus group. I can't tell you the number of times that those educators said they were so grateful just to have the opportunity to come together across all the different, five different schools and talk with each other and find the similarities and differences in their experiences. So we will have faculty discussions, as I mentioned, both on hiring committees, at leadership teams, and then full faculty about what we're looking for. And then I think the last piece is kind of covered up by the little pictures on the screen. But it's what we're going to report on in February about professional development in cultural competency and in working with a more diverse workforce in general.
Thank you, Kristen. Lastly, you know, I want to share just a few words with you before we close out. You know, if you look at the national sort of landscape on this work of hiring and retaining teachers of color, we know that, you know, for, you know, quite some time, for a long time, there have been, you know, many school districts and district leaders who have, who continue to really work towards diversifying their teaching force. And, you know, I think it's best that we also acknowledge that, you know, we, you know, when we have school districts and perhaps school leaders say things like, you know, "I don't see color," for example. Just that statement alone ultimately erases the experiences of educators of color and the experiences that they may, they may have in their school districts. I know that we cannot, you know, address diversity. We cannot address equity. We cannot address inclusion, and we certainly cannot address retention issues if we don't talk about race, power, class, and privilege, just to name a few. Our focus group really sought out to, you know, sought to understand what our own teachers of color are experiencing in our district. Our qualitative data and themes that emerged from our focus group that you have heard tonight, you know, shows the impact that, you know, the relationships that our teachers of color have with your supervisors, with your colleagues, and of course, through their mentorship, really impacts them and impacts their desire to remain in our district. And so, you know, I really, you know, I leave you with this quote, again, from Sharif El Miki, who is the founder and chief executive officer of the Center for Black Educator Development. She says, "We must be intentional about listening to teachers of color and make engaging with them an ongoing practice if we are serious about retaining them. That means cultivating a culture that will make teachers of color want to stay. An environment where they are happy and thriving, feel respected, valued, and have leadership roles in their schools and districts. One that affirms them creates a support system and invests in them both inside and outside of the classroom." So with that said, I want to thank the school committee, members of the school committee, Dr. Hunter, for giving us the time and space to present to you some of the work we are doing in our district around hiring and retention of teachers of color. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your time, the lesson for everything that you're doing. I mean, definitely, I think in all of the presentations that we've heard and everything, and the quotes that we've seen and the voices we've heard of the students, definitely, I think we are all very cognizant of the importance of having mirrors in the classroom. I mean, we've seen the words of our students of how isolated they can feel at times and how that impacts their for, and, and how that impacts their feeling of safety in the school. And that is, it is, is of the utmost importance, I think, to all of us. I have a few questions. So I, I don't know. I think I might start with Doc, Dr. Martin, can you speak just on trends overall? How you see, you know, as this, as our net gets cast wider and we know more where to, to seek out educators? Are you also seeing increases in, I mean, are, are those places, are they, I guess, are enough people going to those places to say, I am an available educator? Or are the numbers of, of potential educators in our area increasing? I think it's.
What I, what I hear you asking me is, the, the organizations that we, we listed in terms of resources, do we see applicants coming through those organizations? Is that?
Yeah, more applicant, like, I mean, I guess I'm curious overall in the trends in, in Concord. I, I see, I see what we have from sixteen to twenty-five percent for population. I don't know enough about the history of the, the district to see what kind of growth we've had amongst the, the faculty on that. I see that we're, you know, we're at the, the nine, eleven percents and depending on, on where you're talking about, but where are we now compared to where we were five years ago or, or in that time period? And, um, and, um, are, are we able to retain, like, are, are succeeding at the retaining? And are we making ourselves available to a wider, to, to, to a larger number of potential applicants?
Yes. Yes, I am going to, it's a two-part question. I'm going to pass the baton to Kristen, who can speak to five years ago. However, when I look at what's called NAPSI and NIMNET and Handshake, these are all international and national organizations that attract applicants of color BIPOC and beyond, who are interested in becoming educators to, and, and teaching. I believe one of the, one of the statements made was that when you see school districts being intentional about their cultural proficiency and anti-racist and they're naming it and saying it, it invites more applicants to consider that district. As one said, Dr. Hunter, you know, really talked about Concord and the issues weren't swept under the, under, under the carpet, if you will. And that makes a difference. I think also teachers of color are looking to go to school districts that not only are authentic and intentional in their anti-racist education and their cultural proficiency, also growth potential. Is the school system using top-notch equipments, top-notch books, literature? Professional development, is there opportunity to, to grow in my practice? You know, you can, every teacher comes in, you know, brand new and, and comes in with skill sets with you in order to really to become a, an educator of excellence, that requires also some professional development. So when a applicant goes on a website and looks at all the offerings, again, that attracts more applicants of color to come into the district to say, this might be a district that will welcome me, that knows who I am, that sees me, and I can grow. And also I can connect with students of color that are there.
And then I have a question about the, the, the respondent who said, oh, my, my supervisor, I don't remember, my supervisor is, is great. I, I don't find myself code-switching so much, you know, around that person. I mean, to what extent is some, that, that to me is kind of a flag to, to say I don't have to code-switch so much, right? Rather than, you know, is that, is, is hearing that kind of language from, from people who are in the district? If applicants hear that, do they say, oh, maybe, you know, I'd prefer to be somewhere where I don't have to, you know, where I'm not code-switching or where I, you know?
Well, that would be lovely, but I, I, as a person of color, code-switching is part of your, you might say, DNA. It is, it is how one learns to exist in this culture and society. And for one of the educators to say, I can be my authentic self. Most of the time, that's a statement. That's a positive statement. That's a positive statement rather than, when I come to school, I'm a totally different person than you see when I go home. This particular applicant, you know, is saying, you know, if, pre-COVID, if you saw me in Starbucks, I would probably have the same personality conversation that I do in school. And that's a positive piece. That's a real positive piece.
Sarah, just to answer your question directly about our history of hiring within the school districts, the way I can make a great headline out of it is that in the last five years, we've doubled or tripled or even quadrupled the number of faculty of color that we have. The actual fact is that we were pretty low numbers to start with. So, you know, the high school had two or three people who identified as people of color. So tripling that is just getting to nine people, which is definitely better and we're doing great. And my hope is that as we are able to hire and retain faculty of color, that draws more faculty of color. One thing that hasn't come up yet today is that not all faculty of color identify with each other. So it makes a difference if you're black or you're Indian or American Indian or, so, and that makes a difference to students as well. I mean, it's one thing to say, you know, I'm a, a black boy and I had an Indian teacher. It's quite another to say, I had a role model who was a, a black male teacher. So, you know, there, there are differences within, within that sort of general category of people of color. But overall, we're doing really, really well. And I would say our, our new faculty of color and our faculty of color who have been with us for decades are very supportive of this initiative and we literally couldn't do it without them.
And it sounds like on the retention front, we are successful in, I mean, it definitely, right? From everything that Dr. Martin has made me feel much better about, you know, that, that, that the school is, the, the school is having the honest conversations that it, that it should be having and, and, and helping make people understand, like, feel their, their value in our community, right? Yeah. Okay.
I have a question, just piggybacking that, do we have teachers of color in every building? Yes.
Great. Thank you. Court?
Okay.
I'd like to recognize and echo the word that seemed to be repeated a few times tonight, and that was intention and intentional and intentionality. This, this conscious effort is, is so critical. The fact that you're coming before us routinely, that we're coming before you routinely, that you've got the groups underway, I think is, is such a strong impression, such a strong indicator that this is genuinely important to us. I, I would want us to remember as a district that although we're making strides with our hiring and our retention, we do have a community that is changing rapidly. And if we're looking for mirrors, we've got to, we've got to ask who's in the mirror? Because that mirror is, is a community that's undergoing change. I think implied in the data that you presented, Kristen, maybe more than implied, is the idea that we can and should close that gap between percentage of students who identify as students of color and faculty and staff who identify as color. Inherent in that gap is, that's the place where we're trying to show change. A question. I'm curious about the potential of student-teacher hosting in Concord and Concord Carlisle. I can imagine ways that would benefit us, but ways it would be problematic. Do we, do we get visible to a wider group of candidates that could bring us the kind of breadth and experience and diversity we want if we were to pay more attention to our, our responsibility as a, a, a learning site for student teachers?
Yeah, we certainly.
Not advocating it, I just don't know.
We, we, we have relationships with a, a number of local organizations. Probably the one that's best represented in our student teachers is Leslie University. And we also have a lot of guidance counselor interns, psychology interns and so forth. And those institutions are doing what the school institutions are trying to do as well, which is encouraging more people of color to go into those fields. So even though we have great relationships with all those schools, they don't have candidates of color to always offer us. We've had some, but far fewer than what we would hope. And it's certainly a pipeline. It absolutely, yeah, you're right about that.
Thank you.
Can I jump in with a quick comment and a couple of questions?
Please.
So first, my comment is gratitude, both on behalf of the, the school committee and district, but also personally. And I say that because I have seen the progress in, in hiring over the past several years and it's been very exciting. And then on a personal front in the past year, I think this year and last year, I had teacher conferences with a couple of the teachers of color. And I walked away thinking, please, please tell me that we as a district are doing a good job to retain these people. And it wasn't just because they're a teacher of color, which I think has value, but because they were just a great teacher. And, and I walked away saying, I want to do everything that I can to support this teacher because I want this teacher for my next youngest child and, and I want them to continue to be here. So that's the, the statement of gratitude and not just on behalf of the district, but personally. I mean, we have some amazing teachers out there who are also teachers of color and, and both of those have value. So, and that's to the point that you mentioned, one of you, whether it's Kristen or someone, about highlighting qualified, you know, highly qualified, because we're not just bringing people on only because they're a person of color, but they are highly qualified and, in my opinion, amazing teachers, the, the ones who I've interacted, a few who I've interacted with. So following up on that, I had two questions in terms of the retention piece. One is, you, you mentioned support groups like this focus group. And I'm very curious, are there once, this, I know this is kind of a finite project of the focus groups to do some research here. Are we continuing a type of, you know, a district-wide support group somehow for teachers of color?
Yeah, so we've had a history of having a support group for teachers of color. As, as long as I've been here, there's been one. Right now, there's one specific to the middle school. There's also one that any of our faculty of color can go to, run by Edco, by the ideas at Edco. So that's always open through our membership with Edco. So one thing that has been an obstacle in the past is, you know, we haven't had a lot of faculty of color and coming together physically has been tough because all the schools end at different times and so forth or start at different times. So it's hard to physically come together. So it's one of the kind of silver linings of COVID is that we really can meet virtually. And what we've found, and I think school committee, you've probably found it too, is that people are more likely to come to a meeting when it's virtual and they can like attend on their phone. So we definitely had people in our focus group who were on their phones, but it meant so much to them to talk and to listen to other faculty of color that, that they were there.
That's great. That's terrific. And my second question is also a reaction to something in the presentation. One of you read a quote from a teacher or a higher saying something about, I have finally made some friends in my building and, and, and feel support network there. And I thought, you know, that's very interesting. That's a term making friends that we usually think about for the students and making sure that students make friends. But that's a really important concept for adults, for all of us. If we don't feel like we have friends in our place of work or interaction, it's hard to be there. And so I guess the question is, and I know this is, this is very hard during COVID times because of the fact that social things are like this on a screen. But outside of an actual support group, are there, are there things and opportunities that allow for teachers at a particular building to just socialize and make friends very often to, to basically smooth that process for someone new coming in?
Yeah, it's one of the signs of a healthy school culture is if the faculty kind of get together on their own willingly, you know, outside of faculty meetings. And I'm happy to say that that does happen. You know, I, I, every time I open up like my Willard email listserv and they're doing another Willard Faculty Trivia Night or, you know, all of those events that are mostly hosted by the PTG and there's some kind of faculty appreciation, but everyone goes and then they hang out together. That is, that is wonderful. Yeah.
That's great. Yeah. Terrific. Thank you. That's my question.
Hi, could I chime in? Thank you. Thank you, Court. So a comment and, and a couple of questions. One comment is that I really appreciate the presentation today. And you, you spoke about mirrors and, and windows today for our students of color. I just wanted to highlight the importance of having teachers of color for, for non-color students, for, for, for the general population of our students as they see different perspectives that, in a classroom, different life experiences. And they also see positive examples of, of, of people, of, of people of color that may not be living in their, in their community. So those experiences really are giving opportunity to students to widen their perspective as they are going through the school day, every day. So I really appreciate the discussion and the commitment to expanding, expanding on this. The, the question, I, I have a couple of questions. Court touched a little bit on the, on my first question in terms of, I understand that it's difficult to find teachers of color, to recruit them. Are there opportunities to recruit through, not necessarily higher teaching positions, but maybe as tutors or assistants to coaches, these kind of positions? And the second question is, do, are they particular locales where teachers, where we are recruiting the teachers of color? Because distance to, uh, living a, a, a reasonable distance to a community that you work in is, is important. We have seen in Carlisle that often, you know, our, our teachers are not able to, because the, the properties are so expensive. It's, it's hard to find teachers or nurses and people that work in this school or in a town to be able to live in a town. So just wonder if, if you could speak further to that.
Andrew, can you speak to it?
Yeah, you know, I, I was, I was, as you were talking, Dev, I was thinking about the, the initiative that the town of Pittsfield out in the Berkshires, that, that they conducted. that, that they conducted, I believe it was two years ago, where, um, Pittsfield actually, um, received a grant of about, I'd say $40,000, um, from Desi, where they, uh, proactively went out to, um, North Carolina, um, agricultural and, and, and technical, uh, state university, to specifically recruit, um, undergraduate students, um, who were pursuing a degree in education, right? And they, they, um, recruited about 12, um, of those students, from North Carolina ANT, um, to come to Pittsfield. And specifically, you know, how, how, how the school district really approached this is, is, is very bold. They, 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 um, they went to the town and, and, and basically asked the town to provide, um, some housing, for these 12 potential candidates, these, these 12 students. And so they brought these 12 students all the way from South, from, from North Carolina, all the way up to Pittsfield, Massachusetts, out in the Berkshires. They had all 12 students stay within the town. They had a week's worth of exposure to not only the school system, but of course to the community, to students, teachers, et cetera. And their goal of all that was to orient them, um, to, you know, obviously to the school district, but also to give them that exposure that, you know, you know, the exposure where they can see themselves in a school district like Pittsfield, where I believe it was like 90% of their teachers are white. And so at the end of this experience, they, 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 you know, they gave offers to all 12 of those potential candidates. And out of the 12, 11 of those students accepted a position in Pittsfield, Massachusetts. Now those positions could have been a teaching position, a tutoring position. However, to have that, you know, to have almost all those candidates say, yes, I, I see myself in Pittsfield, I want to come back, uh, uh, to Pittsfield, uh, to, to start my teaching career, says a lot, right? But I think, you know, that was a very bold initiative, uh, for not only the school district, to tackle, but also for the school district to partner with the town of Pittsfield, uh, to ensure that the candidates that they were bringing out from North Carolina, uh, were able to remain, um, in the community. And I believe going into their, going into the following year, they were provided a year's worth of, of, of housing. To, again, to, to speak to what you're saying about, you know, the commute and the distance, uh, they were able to remain in the town for just that one year, uh, so that that wasn't a burden. Um, and, you know, that, that, that initiative was actually shared by, um, by, um, some folks from Desi in a, in a conference that I went to, uh, two years ago. But I think it's doable, you know, we, we just have to be, you know, really think about how, how creative and bold we want to be with this work. But again, you know, it, it, it shows you, you know, what, just, you know, it's not just, but what $40,000 in a grant, uh, can really do. I mean, they, again, hired in just one single year, uh, 11, uh, uh, candidates of color, began to work in their town. So it's, 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 it's definitely doable, but it requires, um, you know, like Court said, um, us to be intentional about, about our work.
Well, and it also, it also tells us that, uh, the, the town took it on as their problem to solve, their goal to achieve.
Correct.
And these are, uh, practical obstacles to, uh, people of color, uh, to even take on, uh, to, to, to be able to access those communities with job opportunities. Because if you don't live in a community, it, it creates really, uh, it becomes impossible to, to commute an hour each way, you know, to, for an internship or for, for such opportunities, uh, short-term opportunities or, so, thank you for that input.
So is that great coming up again that we could apply for it?
Look into that for sure. Um, I know that that was a one-time thing that Desi sort of offered. But I can certainly, you know, I'm sure there are grants out there that we can apply for that, that, you know, that we can use the funds specifically for this type of work.
I think, uh, I think the question about student teachers and I think Eva's question about tutors is really a question about our pipeline. And I, you know, have learned through all these workshops and so forth that Andrew and I have gone to that the key to the pipeline is keeping the pipeline open and wide for a long time. And, and so, you know, in the last couple of years, I would say probably at least three, we have had a lot of good experience with, you know, keeping it open as long as we can and as wide as we can, to attract, uh, more faculty of color. And I, I think it's going to get easier and easier. That's what it feels like every year is that because we now have more, uh, faculty of color and they're reaching professional status after three years and so forth, that it's every time, every year, it gets easier and easier to attract, um, more. And so much so that, you know, our, the couple of the last hires that we've been able to do came to Concord after they already had professional status somewhere else because we were being so intentional about our hiring.
I think the, and, and to add to that, Kristen, in terms of the pi- pipeline of teachers who are already here talking about where they work. You know, I'm work, I work in Concord. Oh, how is it? And, you know, and, and, and all of most educators have friends who work other places. And I know I've said, you know, many times, um, someone says, do you know if they have any openings for a? And I said, you need to go and apply to, because here's a district, you know, not because I'm here, but what I'm here and I see what's happening. And I've said to, um, friends and colleagues, you need to check out Concord, Concord Carlisle. Uh, this is a, a school system that is intentional about the work, wants to expand their, uh, teachers of color. And it's a good, it's a good place to be, um, and to grow. So when those, when the casual pipelines stay open and, you know, kind of each one teach one, tell one, that's also another way to, to expand the exposure and the invitation.
Quickly, do we hold on to, uh, possible applications? I know that openings are not necessarily always available. Do, do we hold on to the applicant's, uh, information even if, um, there is no particular position open at the time?
You know, the way that, uh, we do a lot of our hiring, uh, not to get into the nitty gritty, but is, uh, through a database called SchoolSpring. And so when we say we're involved in all of these other, uh, networks and so forth, what we're doing on those sites is pointing them to our job applications on SchoolSpring. And so once you, once an applicant has set up a, um, file on SchoolSpring, they can keep it active and we can keep, we can look back at everyone that we had. So it's a, it's a great tool, um, and pretty much everybody uses it now. All educational institutions use SchoolSpring.
Thank you.
So, um, I have a quick question, and if it's not a quick answer, I, we're really running way over. We have people waiting on the call to do some other business. What are we doing new this year that we have not done before? I would say is some of those memberships we just initiated last year. That's probably the biggest, most important thing that we're doing. And then keeping, uh, the training going for our interview teams, um, uh, on bias. I think that's another big piece.
I would also add, you know, the creation of our, um, hiring committee that myself, Kristen, Dr. Martin and Yolanda Volpe, um, sit on to, you know, to again, you know, continue to explore, explore these, um, this, this particular issue on, on hiring and retention. We, we met a couple of times, um, last year. And of course with this work that, that we just, uh, presented to you all is obviously an ongoing, um, you know, ongoing work, um, that we're all engaged in as well.
And how do potential applicants know about all this work?
Uh, great question. Uh, I think, you know, one, one of the way, you know, actually just today, I was, um, because we have partnered with these three organizations, we are starting, at least for in my inbox, I'm starting to get hit with a lot of the hiring fairs that are coming up. Um, and so just, just today, um, we have three potential, um, hiring fair that, uh, we, we can again, um, utilize to, to recruit teachers. We have Howard University, um, that, that has a hiring fair in the spring. And, and by the way, all three of these, uh, universities are, are hosting virtual, um, uh, hiring fairs, you know, we have Howard University, Worcester State University and UMass Boston. And so I think these, you know, these three universities are potentially three areas where we can recruit, that we can prepare some, some, some information, uh, for potential candidates, to have, to read and to get to know our district. And so I'm, I'm eager to, to attend these virtual, um, career fairs, um, and, and, and see what, you know, see what the candidate pool, um, looks like. So.
Thank you.
I'll be brief since we're running late. So I, I wanted to follow up on the, on, on the solution of, of, of housing, how important it is for, um, for one, for our teachers, our staff to live in the communities that, where, where they work. And that is on our town and all of us to have those conversations. And that's an area where I have learned and I have grown. Because yes, I do support affordable housing, but I've had conversations with people that are not very supportive. But I, I understand also from those conversations, uh, the concerns and they are real. So it matters how we do it and where we build. So I got to understand and from grow from there, uh, in terms of, uh, that, uh, issue. I wanted to acknowledge, uh, what a sea change we've had in our school district in the past five years. It's, it's been really, really enormous and I wanted to acknowledge, uh, Kristen and Andrew and Dr. Hunter. Since you've arrived here, uh, you, you saw it right away, you heard it right away and you tackled it right away. And, uh, that's, that's really enormous. That was a risk. And you took a risk on, on, on minorities, you took a risk on, on, uh, anti-racism and it's paying off. And I personally appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you. It's, it's a scary thing to do sometimes and we absolutely, uh, love your support. Couldn't do it without it. Wouldn't do it without it.
Kristen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use that as a segue, a scary play, you know, the, the, the fear, the vulnerability required to, uh, to learn and grow and change. Because here's where I think I can, uh, credit Erin Fife as a community member who's created a safe place for members of the community, including not, uh, a few educators who have spontaneously joined this, uh, group, uh, Concord Organized Against Racism. I, I do believe it's a, a safe place for people to learn and grow and confront what they don't understand and gain, gain, uh, sensitivity they didn't have before. That's been my experience. So I, I don't want to put, uh, too much your way, uh, in, in terms of a buildup, Erin, because I know that's not why you're here. I think you're here to, uh, share insider questions, not to receive my, my accolades. But I do want to thank you for the efforts you've made to get the, uh, the group together and be as, as welcoming, uh, as you have been in these efforts. So I'll ask you to unmute and, uh, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Court. Um, yeah, we couldn't do it without all of you either. So the community, we're creating a community support for all of your work and thank you for that. My question, I'll keep it very brief, um, is, you know, I see a lot of these actions that you're listing and a lot of this data. And I was wondering about how, uh, we can show this data, in terms of outcomes and how we can show it to the public. So can we see, can we track hiring over time, you know, over the last five years? How has our staff, what, what have the percentages been? Um, I'd also love to drill down into the individual schools. How many staff of color are at each school? And how does that track with the population of students at each school? Because coming from the Thorough district, we have a growing number of students of color and not, I have not seen a growing number of staff of color necessarily in that particular school. So that's my question.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. So Kristen will ask you and, uh, Andrew and certainly Dr. Hunter and Dr. Martin to hang on to that question and come back to us, as I'm sure you will. Thank you. Any other, any other, uh, comments from the school committee? Hearing none, we want to thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Andrew. Uh, Dr. Martin, certainly. Thank you very much. Let's, uh, let's use our pivot word, our familiar word, uh, this, uh, this school year and pivot over to, uh, item B, Dr. Hunter, and that is testing. You're on mute.
Thank you. So let me just pull my slides up. Um, there are some folks here to help inform this conversation. So I'll encourage, um, Brad Guth and Anna Schneider from CIC Health. And I'm going to storytell a little. They're the experts. Let's start this conversation with us saying that, um, I am not a pro or have all of this figured out. We're here to sort of talk on the state of the options that we've revisited off and on. Um, and as well as a state option that has come up, uh, sponsorship by the Department of Public Health and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, I've had a couple of conversations with CIC Health. So they're here to make this a more informed discussion than I could do on my own. So we'll invite them to chime in at any point. Um, and I'm going to do a really high level overview of where we're at and what we have for information. And then it is a discussion and, um, you know, a request for next steps to see if we can try to get something moving. Um, so just updates, a reminder that we are currently, um, thanks to your support, testing symptomatically, symptomatic people, uh, in Cambridge. And we've started to test staff at the high school, high school staff so far. We'll keep growing that. That's about a week old. Through that same partnership with the organization in Cambridge, people are at their own option, able to go in and do asymptomatic testing, um, also at their own cost. So that might be for a close contact. There's been people going in for travel. That's all based out of the Cambridge site. So those are options now. When there's a need, we have some testing options that allow for efficient and effective appointments and turnaround. What we're talking about tonight is different than that. We're talking about more broad-based asymptomatic surveillance testing, which we talked about earlier in the fall, trying to help us understand, uh, what's happening for those without symptoms. And I'll talk more on what I think the information does for us. So last week, when we came back and had heard there was COVID funds to be available, and I'll preface that by saying we're still trying to hone in on how much. But we heard that, so we started to reach out to vendors, uh, you know, sometimes things just come together. Brad happened to reach out to me last week and the timing was perfect. So we had pursued that quickly last week to talk about what CIC could do. And then Friday, uh, the governor announced that the state had come to the same conclusion and they were going to be offering districts options for surveillance testing. We owe them a response by this Friday of our level of interest. And I'll get into some of the, some of the details. We don't know a lot of details, but some, with a tentative rollout, they're slating for late in January and we're awaiting more information. So what we're talking about is a PCR pool test. So I think you're familiar with the PCR acronym at this point. Uh, the pool test means that it's a pool of 10 nasal swabs, all analyzed together, which is meant to help the costs come down. Results are still 24 to 48 hours. It seems like Broad is still the lab in the mix, which we're becoming very familiar with. So that's, I think- It seems like Broad is still the lab in the mix, which we're becoming very familiar with. So that's, I think, a positive. If the pool comes up positive, then each person who's in that pool needs to have an individual PCR done. And then you can identify who's the source of the positive test. We do have an option right now because of our previous work that we can run those individual tests, possibly at the high school, if, if we've got the capacity to do that, or we can send people into Cambridge. So I feel like that's a benefit for us, that we've got an immediate pipeline to the next stage. And we don't have to figure that out. You know, there are a lot of logistics to all of this. We've been talking with districts that are already doing it. Most, we are finding they do not assign pools. It's random and based on how people come in to be tested or the tests are returned depending on which tests they're using. And it's really figuring out the hub of the organizational pieces out of mostly the nurses' offices and just managing scheduling and getting, getting tests to, to Broad. And some true logistical pieces seem to be the bulk of the work. I must get into cost because it is a big piece of the discussion. So thanks to the state release, they are saying they will pay for the first six weeks of the program. They did not attach a cost going forward past that. So we have more information to gather about how that would work transitioning from them. In working with CIC, the approximate cost is about $10 per person per week. So, you know, we just ran very broad numbers here and this is assuming 100% participation on a voluntary program. So that will not happen and that will already start to bring the numbers down. We have about 720 employees pre-K through post-secondary. So 10 times that is an easy number of 7,200. If we estimate it at 18 weeks and we've bounced around which number to use there, depending how the six weeks falls. And when we get started, you can see for staff, it's maximum cost of 130,000. There's a lot of variables to play with there in terms of how are we testing weekly? The state program is twice a week for staff. The vaccine is going to roll out some of the, somewhere in the middle of this and what is the impact of that? And again, just percentage of participation is a factor we don't know yet. Student cost, the, the numbers are the same, just times more, more people. Approximately 3,300 kids in the district. And I just did the math to show you. Clearly there's a large price tag here as we talk about stat, students. Some districts aren't testing the elementary kids. There's variations on all of that, of course, in terms of whether you include everybody. Do you focus on the older kids? It's will certainly be voluntary and we again, don't know it level of interest at this point. So there's, there's a lot to figure out there. In terms of what the options are for cost, and I just wanted to name some. We need to understand our current roles and duties and how that's going to play into the demand of this process. The work that I've been doing with our lead nurse, Lisa Kosky, has been to just sort of analyze how we're operating and where there's windows and where there aren't. You know, and we don't know if we can do this within the current staffing. She's feeling probably if everybody's being offered the testing, we need to allocate a halftime nurse to that. I can't answer if we can do that within our current people or not at this point. And it feels like the big load is the administrative piece. And perhaps we're going to need to either real, reallocate or hire a support staff just to manage some of the logistics. But we're on the really early phase, you know, early discussions of this with only so much information. So I just, I don't want to commit to saying we must have this, but I do think we have to expect there could be a little bit of staffing need, just knowing what I know about the demands on the nurses' offices right now. Funding options, and we've touched some on this way back in the fall thing. There are various options that we'll just name again. CARES Act is certainly some, and that's what the state's recommending to be tapped. The Concord Education Fund, other districts have approached their education funds and created partnerships with them. Some districts have been fundraising either through or aside from the education fund or on their own. And some districts are asking parents to pay. So it feels like a nice little window here with the six weeks of cost coverage to get us going, which I'm sure is the state's intent, and give us time to figure this part out. So next steps, and these are just my, my recommendations, certainly all up for discussion. I do think we should determine and commit to our interest in hearing more on the DESI DPH program, which just means I sign us up for hearing more information by Friday. I do think the data as to the level of interest of staff and families would just give us numbers to work with in terms of multipliers of scope and cost. And I don't think it's a, we need a certain threshold to go forward because I think there's value regardless. But I, I do think it would just be helpful for operational purposes. We definitely need to continue to connect with the districts currently testing. We've been doing that the last week. Very, very help, very, very helpful to hear their work and their structures. Relationship with CIC, like I said, is very positive. If I need to make a recommendation for additional personnel, we need to keep working on that. And of course, continuing to pay attention to DESI and DPH. So that's really where we are tonight, is a discussion of next steps. I was asked earlier today, and it just might be worth repeating it to everyone. You know, if the state hadn't proposed anything, what would I have said our starting point was? I definitely would have on our own said we'd start with staff and make our way to students. So I just want to say that out loud because maybe it's part of this discussion in terms of how we move forward. So I think that's where I'll wrap it up. I see Brad's turned on his camera. So he, he, Brad, I'll let you introduce yourself and anyone else you brought with you that you want to introduce. And we'll let you take the conversation from there.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I, I recognize several names here. I, I've had many of these conversations, but it's, for me, it's neat having one in the community where I live. I live here in Concord. So both kids went to CC. And so, you know, enjoyed my discussions with Lori, just thinking about where the town is and where we can go. I have my colleague Anna Schneider here as well. And yeah, a lot is, a lot has really moved in the space. When, when we started in June and July, you know, kind of working with the Broad who had the technology, but kind of the challenges of kind of beyond the initial use case of, of, of all the colleges and such. How can we make this into something that you could really even conceive as possible for public schools? And the traction that's now been made in terms of now having a viable approach for pooled testing. Yes, we want to get the cost down lower. Hopefully we can get down, you know, below $10 a test. But now all of a sudden we have something that is worth, you know, worth thinking about. So we're both here to, you know, I mean, we've, we've seen a lot. Anna's done a lot in the schools themselves. And so certainly could talk through some of the questions around what this looks and feels like. You know, we are, you know, DESI is kind of looking at various vendors. We're certainly, you know, very active in discussions with them and I, I would expect they'll have something more to say about that, you know, and our, our role is really, you know, simplify logistics around standing up programs. In fact, some of you may have seen today, Governor Baker announced kind of the first max mass vaccination site down at Foxborough. And we're the operational partner for that. So, so kind of our skill set is, is really evolved around, you know, the logistics and the operational expertise, you know, to, you know, tackle this very difficult challenge that we're going through.
Thank you for, for joining us tonight. Implied in what we're talking about is that this school committee and this, this leadership team has a desire to move ahead on this. And I'm not sure we need to revisit that, but I'm happy to if this committee wants to. Implicit in what we're doing tonight is a desire to, to move ahead and expand testing. So I want to, before we go any further, I want to put it to the committee. Is that so? Because I don't think we want to let that go unaddressed if somebody thinks it needs to be addressed. I'll say as one member of seven, I, I am prepared to move ahead because we're trying to tackle a lot of unknowns within some very known threats. And I think we're going to have to be proactive. And as I've told my own family, in a year I'll know whether I was overly conservative or not. Right now I don't know. Nobody's going to tell me in a year that I got it just right. So I, I want to put it out clearly to the committee. Are we prepared to move ahead? Dr. Hunter's done this because she believes we are and I want that affirmed if that is, that is the case.
I, can I ask a question? I think there are two separate questions. I think, are we prepared to move ahead with the six-week program in, from Massachusetts? That's, I think, an easy question. I think less easy is, you know, if we had 100% participation, are we willing to allocate what's really going to be like a quarter of a million dollars to this? If we had 100% participation for 18 weeks, I think those are two totally different questions.
Well, you, you framed it perfectly. Yeah.
I, I think we can look at this as a, as a dialing up of our, of our testing program. And definitely this DESI opportunity gives us a chance to really dial up in, in a different way. But I'm wondering, Dr. Hunter, you mentioned that there, there's, if there's, there's interest in maybe the way that we started the testing program that we have in operation right now with a small group. And so is there a way in the next couple of weeks to sort of pilot this on, on our shoulders with, with just the, the faculty in, in some way? And I think something that I'm curious about that also is just the, Brad, you, it, it, I just need a clarification. Is it $100 per, per test tube? Or is it $10 per person? So can you have
Yeah.
smaller, could you, you know, if you do five people, is it, is it $100 or is it $50?
Yeah. So the current model is by the tube. So in theory, the cost would go up if you were not filling the, if you're not filling a tube. Correct.
So Dr. Hunter, do you think it's reasonable that we could think of some way to, to try out? I mean, I guess it's, we're already on the 12th, right? And optimistically, this would be starting the 31st at the state level. But let's give a little window there. Would we have a chance to do at least one testing in the faculty?
I think so. And Brad, please chime in because it would, you know, really in our conversation, you said it would be about a two-week turnaround to get started. I, I think the staff is a doable starting place. The scope of doing all the kids and the staff is definitely a little different journey. And I, I do that, we're being really successful by starting with, you know, a manageable quantity with our symptomatic testing. And, you know, that's going to grow fairly quickly, I'm sure, as we, now that we've got to have our feet under the ground. I think the same would be here. And the staff, of course, you're just dealing with adults. You're dealing with the people who work with us all the time. And, you know, we are able to say, you know, we're, we're just figuring this out. I think that's been a really other big part where those is, those on the real ground floor of the symptomatic piece, we're able, you know, a couple of us, me included, were able to say, can you just try this? And see how this is going to work because we want to work the bugs out with a small group of people and not thousands or, or whatever. So that would be my sense is that that's a doable starting point for sure.
And, and the fact that, you know, the, the fact that the Pro EMS program is already going, I mean, you have some, you have, before you take the first step, right? So you have kind of that construct. And I think also, you know, some towns have already moved. So there's also some experience, you know? So we're working with the town of Harvard, you know, who, you know, put this out to an RFP, et cetera. They started a week or two ago. And so I think there's a lot, I think Lori, you've already, you've already, you've already spoken to your colleagues.
Harvard. So we've already tapped her firsthand experience here. And we've been talking to Wellesley a lot too, who's doing a different type of test, but.
Correct. And Watertown, so we have a model of Watertown. So, so there is some, you know, the approach of taking a, a first step like that makes a lot of sense, you know, to get down the learning curve. But there, there is, there is, you know, there's now experience around in other communities that, that can, that Concord could definitely draw upon.
The, the question we have per week right now assumes no positives, right?
Yeah. So we would, we would incur the cost of the, assuming we're going to cover that or however we're figuring this out. Yes, you'd incur the cost of the, the pool that needs to get to the individual tests. Yes.
So the, the towns that you're mentioning, are these the towns that have their in remote coming into, entering, bringing students back to school? Or the schools are in the same situations are as us? Because from what I've heard from, what I understood from Baker's information that he has put out was the purpose of this program was to really push more schools to come back online, feel safe enough for teachers to feel safe enough to come back online and bring students into the building.
The two we've been talking to have been in person all along. I know, you know, Brad mentioned Watertown. I think theirs was more of a return to school plan. But the two we've been talking to have been in person and open. So.
Just a little clarification though. Harvard does not test remote students or teachers.
That makes sense. So there's a place our numbers are going to drop a little. We didn't track them off. Great point, Cynthia.
Just my two cents on how it has gone in Harvard since I have been there. We're in the second week and I think we were all a little, well, very nervous about how difficult this would be. And at the end of the day, I think we were thrilled that it was much easier than we thought it would be. The whole data entry portion of it is, is very easy and, you know, honestly, we're a much smaller district, but we really did it with three people. So. And we finished our testing today at 10:30 with half the school, much smaller district. So I, I can't drop here, but just.
Now it's great to have your firsthand eyes on this and feedback.
So question for, actually for Cynthia, does the testing cut into the the teaching time at the school or is it done after or before? How does this, if you don't mind, because I don't think the public will understand what happens.
Right. We did it during our mass breaks. And that's how easy, that's how fast it goes. We have 10, 15-minute mass breaks. And the testing itself is, you know, so fast. So it didn't, you know, it's definitely not a nothing, but I would say it is, did not have a huge impact to teaching and learning.
So a follow-up question, because we have done testing before. When you go to get tested, you have to blow out your nose clearly on passages. So the students do that in their, in, in their seats? How does this work? Because it's not necessarily probably the safest thing to have everybody blow out their nose.
Little pop-up tents outside with, with three. And they're sort of, they walk through the tents. So there's a station where they blow their nose, they hand sanitize. And then they walk into the tent and get tested and hand sanitize on their way out. These are all students. Teachers would be much easier. Again, I would, you know, probably outside tents the best. But, you know, CIC probably can recommend, you know, approaches.
You had different models. I mean, I don't know, Anna, if you want to share any.
Yeah, I think Watertown is doing sort of a drive-up type of situation. It's a little bit different. But as much as possible, a lot of schools are having an outside area or just a separate part of the building that people feel comfortable that this, you know, scenario is happening. So.
If I'm correct, in your conversations with Brad and his, his group, you were confident that we could move from the state to his program with, with great ease and be seamless. Am I correct?
That's my understanding. Brad, you probably have more assuredness of that than I do, but that's my understanding.
Yeah. I mean,
Good.
Perhaps, perhaps it'll be one and the same. I mean, that would be, you know, and that's, but I just, I, you know, we're not, we're not finalized with, with DESI yet. But I, that would be my, my hope.
Okay. A minor point, stop me if I'm getting into the weeds here. Is it not true that the state program tests twice a week and we're discussing once a week? Am I correct?
That is true. They've suggested twice a week for staff. Brad, do you, or Anna, Chris, I see you're here too. Anybody have opinions on that for?
Well, yeah, okay. So the good news, you know, we have a lot of experience from, you know, the college has got a head start on this, right? And so the epidemiologist, before they went back to school, studied all this and said that if your objective is to prevent community spread, the ID the ideal theoretical cadence is once every three days, so twice a week. What's, and, and many of the schools are doing that. You know, my, my youngest is a Colby and they're twice a week. And it's very high tuition. What seems to have converged is that if you're able to test weekly, you will not eliminate cases. But you will significantly reduce the risk of community spread. And so that's why a lot of organizations and schools have converged upon weekly testing. And that's also assuming that you're doing weekly testing with the 24 hour turnaround time that we're talking around with, with the road. You have that in place because you're picking up with the PCR test, you're picking up the viral load when it's quite low. And, you know, so now you remove somebody from the system before they're contagious. So, so we've seen many organizations, schools that have converged upon weekly testing and, and results have been good. But we also are very clear in saying, we can bring, we're not, we're not the medical experts, you know? So we, you know, it's, it's a, it's a choice to make, you know? Yes, of course, twice a week is, is better. But, you know, if spread is the biggest objective, then weekly seems to be something that schools have been successful with.
So with, with the goal of, of prevent, of reducing community spread, is there any, or what is the discussion about the percentage of participation necessary before significant control is possible? Do we know? What's the, I, I know there's no number, but what, what's the, what's the talk?
75, 80.
Thank you. 75%, okay.
Dr. Hunter, I have a question. How, how do you see this testing help bring students back full-time?
You know, I think we have to do one thing at a time. I was asked this earlier this week. I think the first piece, we don't know what we don't know. So we don't know if we're transmitting asymptomatic because we have no way to capture that right now. So for me, that's the first piece of data, especially with the surging going on is, are we, is there transmission going on that we can't tell because people aren't, you know, aren't symptomatic? I'd like to know that, first of all. And I think too, it will get us a little step for, we're very comfortable, but I'm not going to say we're anxiety free right now in how we're operating with the numbers of cases. And, you know, we, we were at 32 cases last week alone. So I, I do think this is another level of confidence building. I think it's a bigger picture discussion in terms of other things that have to play out. I don't think it's a standalone trigger to anything per se. The vaccine has to play out. A number of other pieces have to, to give us direction on how we're going to move forward towards bringing everybody back. So I, I don't know that I think this is the immediate because I, I know I have, we have to go to three feet pretty much, certainly 612, we have to go to three feet. And at the elementaries, our afternoons are purposely scheduled the way they are to not, not need to figure out how you do these mass things of lunch and recess and specials and, and such. And that's why the core academics are all in the morning. So I don't see it as a one-to-one relationship. I think it's an important step towards how we will get there. I, I don't know that I see that it's an immediate. So it's part of a, it's a big picture. And, you know, we're going to have this discussion on how we, you know, make our way back to normal. I think it's gradual is my sense. And we'll certainly want to talk on that as we get into the early, late winter and spring. It's a good, great question, though. Great question.
Do you, do you see a need for, you know, I, in a utopia, right? Teachers that will be vaccinated by the conclusion of phase two, which ostensibly would be, you'd have both of your doses by the end of March, right? Would you see the need to test teachers once their vaccination program has been completed?
What a great question. So I reached out to our public health nurse last night and said, you know, once you're vaccinated, what happens in terms of if you're a close contact or whatever? Her answer, and I'll ask the others to weigh in, but her answer was the, you know, the, the research on transmission, even though you're vaccinated, is still a work in progress. So she was active, that's the right answer. Yeah, she's actively listening to the DPH, you know, information that's coming out. I don't think it's a sure thing that you are vaccinated and say you don't need to be tested more because we might want to know you could be transmitting, not because you're going to get sick per se. So it's, it sounds like it's a work in progress still.
I think that even in California where, where people who work in hospitals are vaccinated, they're asking them still to wear masks in their homes. Because there is still a lot that's unknown.
Right. And, you know, the other part of this discussion and Fatima's question, you know, the kids vac, the vaccine for the kids is, is a ways out here still. So that'll, that's going to impact our decision-making, in my opinion, for months to come still. I wish I knew how many, but I have no way to know that. I think they're just beginning to test the vaccine on small, small groups.
I had a quick question, if I might, about the remote students. And if we're not testing the remote students, is that something that we should consider? My question would be, how many, a percentage of kid, those kids who are remote are doing extracurriculars? After school, participating in sports? Or even participating in extracurriculars that don't have anything to do with school? Where you could test a pod and then sort of see where, it's almost like you could do a contact trace as to where they're getting it. So I, I just, I know there's a lot of talk about sports and the spread through sports. So I was just interested in that piece and what everyone thought.
Yeah, we'll ask you for a name and address for the record, if you'd be so kind. And then we'll ask for a response.
Absolutely. Leah Butler, 533 Lexington Road.
Thank you very much.
That we're deviating from the normal practice, that usually we are having a meeting in the public, not with the public, but, but I think. Answer.
Apologies.
Question.
So I don't know.
That exact, oh, sorry, Court, go ahead.
No, please, Dr. Hunter, go ahead.
I don't think we know the answer to that. I mean, I, you're not wrong. In fact, I've been reporting remote cases because some of those kids come and play sports and, you know, there is impact. So I don't know the answer to that per se. I understand why the priority would be to kids coming into the school day likely first. So there's, there's a discussion point to be had there. It is, it may, and it may depend child to child, depending on their level of some, you know, and we've talked to a lot of these families, there's a range of reasons you're doing it. So it may impact the decision in terms of participation.
If we wanted to, I, I, I like Sarah's reference to dialing up. We aren't hitting off on switches. We're, we're dialing up. If we wanted to move very quickly, we don't know when the state is going to move. So Brad, would your firm want a, a date certain before we talk to you about engaging you?
The, the date certain in terms of the?
When your firm would come in under, under Concord's relationship with you, not, not the state affiliation.
Sure. No, I think we're, I mean, we're pretty mission-based. I mean, I think we're, we're flexible. And so, you know, the way that we work is, is it's, you reserve testing for a certain period of time. So I think, you know, the, the first thing I'd wanted to do is to kind of, you know, get you capable as soon as possible. You know, meaning kind of going through kind of a contracting and training and such. And then we'll have some more information in terms of the state program, our role, et cetera. And, you know, and, and could, you know, work a week at a time or whatever it might be. I mean, I think there's a fair amount of flexibility.
All right. I'm going to ask Jared through Dr. Hunter, as brief as you can. I apologize because I like to listen to you. I learn a lot. Does the, are we within purchasing prerogatives to move without any, any extensive RFP purchase or, or, or fee process? How fast, how fast can you move?
If approved, right away, this is exempt.
Thank you.
Doesn't get faster than that, Court.
Dr. Hunter, are we able to use that vaccination tent for testing? Because Cynthia has.
Yeah. And, and that was actually part of the discussion that we had in the early, just in the early talks of the setting outside going up. So I believe the town would be very open to that during the school day. Just to be, anytime they're not vaccinating, yeah.
But just to be clear, you really need very little infrastructure. You don't need power, you know, wifi or anything like, you just need the testers and all the data entry can occur.
Yeah.
Outside of that setting.
Good.
I'm sorry to keep extending this. I have one question for Anna or anyone who has kind of experienced and insight into other towns who are doing it. I'm imagining in terms of this pool and then the follow-up tests. I imagine this being not a, a, a big deal in, of, you know, chaos and confusion and everything after a positive pool test because we have testing onsite in Cambridge access. So I'm envisioning this, and this is from a perspective of, you know, a parent who might be thinking, oh, do I want to participate or not? And this would help us communicate this out. As a parent of three kids, you know, who's thinking, oh, my three kids might be in the same pool, might be in a separate one. My vision is that it, even if there are some positive pool tests, it's not that big a deal because those kids can then be tested relatively quickly. And maybe they miss out on a day of in-person school, but then they're back into the flow. Is that how it's playing out in other places?
Yeah, basically. I mean, I think you do want to plan for that approximately 24 hours of needing to retest or re-swab.
Right.
And then plus the result coming after that. So you, you, you know, depending on how quickly you can get that test out, that's going to impact that time that someone's out of, out of in-person learning. That being said, it sounds like you all have a system that's, that's set up nicely. And I believe, you know, from the DESI webinar earlier today, that, that the back, the binaxial might be an option that some, that, that could be integrated into that as well, so.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah, she's referencing the antigen test, which we have, our public health officials have steered us pretty clear of antigen at the moment. So I think we'll stay the course on the PCR.
Yeah, I think stay with, I think stay with what you have, you know?
Serving as well so far.
I have a question. If, if you ostensibly, like me, have three children that end up in three disparate pools and now child one is in a pool that comes back positive, are my, are the other two children or the others, or any other siblings impacted by that? So, I mean, ostensibly, like, just because you're in a pool with someone doesn't mean that they're a, a close contact per se. So how does that sort of, that logistical?
Yep. We talked that through earlier today. I don't, we would not impact the siblings because you're right, there's no connection probably to the positive case unless they are the positive case. So we would just want to be efficient to identify who the positive is. Just frame of reference, and this was really interesting. I, we, we talked with Wellesley earlier today, who started doing their surveillance testing way back earlier in the fall. They've had 28 positive cases come out of the asymptomatic testing. So that isn't overwhelming to me. That sounds quite manageable. You know, I think one of my fears was, oh my goodness, how are we going to find these big, huge numbers of asymptomatic cases? It doesn't sound like it despite even where we are with the search. What it will do is identify them. And I think that's just, that's helpful to everybody, right? Community, schools, everybody.
Yeah, if, if I could, I, I have a comment and maybe a question. And if you'll allow me a moment to introduce and credentialize myself, I'm Chris Park. I'm a Concord parent. I have three children in Concord Public Schools today. I also, in my day job, serve in the management consultant field in healthcare research and diagnostics. And I've spent the better part of this past year supporting efforts to scale diagnostic testing around the country, including most recently indirectly with the Rockefeller Foundation and the publication of their national testing plans. And now even more recently than that, alignment with some of the new appointees of the Biden administration on developing a national testing plan. The, the comment I'll make is, I'm happy to act as a resource because there's some very interesting and important federal direction coming that I think will be net positive to everything that's been talked about on this call relative to testing and funding and protocols and research and expectations and so on and so forth. And I certainly don't want to take time on this call to do that, but certainly happy to, to act as a resource if it's helpful. I will say, from my perspective, having experienced much of what's going on around the country, Concord Public Schools in the state of Massachusetts is in a fairly good place relative to many others in terms of the assets that the state has contributed and the point of view, et cetera, et cetera. So as a Concord parent, I feel generally good. The question I have though relates to that. And if I put my parent hat on for a moment, I'm very excited by some of the federal guidance coming out. I'm very excited by what you'll start to hear is the one, two, three testing plan, which is one test per child, two tests per adult per week to essentially create a threefold increase in asymptomatic universal testing. The whole point of that, I think, is very strong push towards in-person learning. And the research that's starting to surface would suggest that actually in-person learning can be safer in many environments and geographies than remote learning where community spread might be more prevalent. And so, Dr. Hunter, when you talked about the Wellesley experience, there weren't 100 or 1,000 new cases identified. There were 28 or so, and it's manageable. It is to increase substantially the comfort and confidence of in-person learning as the right model. And so you find me being very optimistic and supportive. My question is this. Given how appropriate, I believe, and conservative that Concord has been to date, do you envision a scenario, what are the minimum standards of performance by which we might have 100% in-person learning again before this school year ends? Or are we going to kind of continue on the path we're on with partially or hybrid solution for the balance of this year and then reassess over the summer?
So Mr. Park, I'm going to ask you to share your address with us.
Sure. 215 Lexington Road in Concord.
All right. Dr. Hunter, I'm going to ask you to follow up on that, but not tonight. I think it's a big question, an important one. I'd like Mr. Park to give you his contact information offline. You can't escape us. You're lhunter@concordps.org.
I assure you, everyone has it. There is no quick answer to that question, right, Court? We need to, that's going to be a committee discussion as different things start to evolve, so.
Thank, thank you for introducing it, Mr. Park. So I want to bring us back. This can't be shortchanged, but we also have to watch, watch the time. We've got a lot of work to do. We do not meet next week. And so we need to decide as a committee what we can decide and determine tonight by way of advice and direction for Dr. Hunter and what can safely wait two weeks. The, the easy one, I believe, is that you submit the DESI app by this Friday. Otherwise, you foreclose that option for Concord and Concord Carlisle. So that's, that's a necessary. And in terms of how fast we move on other potential options available to us, with, I think, some agreement about the, the hoped-for benefits of any move, moves we make, it strikes me that some, some of that timing decision is based on our confidence in the state coming through by end of month. Would you, would I be correct?
That's what we've been told. I think I'll leave it at that because I haven't heard any follow-up. Brad, did you hear more today?
I mean, they're saying February 1. I know they have some work to do.
Yeah.
But I think everyone, I mean, I think everyone's pushing.
Yeah. And I, I do think the way this rolled out last week says they're, they must be pretty queued up to keep it moving because it was such an aggressive rollout. So whether it's exactly February 1 or a little bit in, but I, I think they're going to stay tight to their timelines.
So are we prepared? I believe then the question is, is this school district prepared to maintain the current level of, of effort testing for two and a half weeks? To be picked up then by the state and an expanded effort, giving us time to decide, do we continue at that level of testing independently with CIC likely after that? Am I framing it the way you all understand it?
Would you clarify if it's teachers or teachers and students, please?
Right now, we are teach, we are testing symptomatic at the high school in Cambridge.
And some asymptomatic if people go in and pay for themselves. We, we, we've become a vehicle to some access, but yeah.
Right. We, we're, we're saying you don't have to go to stop the spread, you can go to Cambridge. So that's what's in play today. And what I'm asking is, So that's what's in play today. And what I'm asking is can we move faster? Is it realistic? And I'm hearing, one, that the state's coming in in two and a half weeks. And number two, Brad's firm would take something approaching two weeks to introduce anything anyway. If I'm correct.
Yeah, but I would, I, I think it, it's the states February 1, that probably means February 1 plus two weeks to stand up to. You know, so it doesn't mean you're, it's not go, you know, it's not, that's not a go date, right? You know, I, I, at least that's my interpretation.
I think that's fair.
We perhaps look at trying to move forward with testing the staff. And if we get a window where we can start that before the state testing, I think it would be helpful to just introduce the district to the process. Before we begin testing everyone, it sounds like. So I really think it would be helpful just to do a staff-only test.
Lori, it would be voluntary for staff, right?
Absolutely. We cannot, we're not a private school. We can't require anybody to get tested. We can ask.
So start date would conceivably be as soon as CIC can pull it off. And end date would be whenever the state says we usher CIC out for six weeks with the intention of bringing them right back in again.
We don't know, right?
Is that correct?
Yeah, with the once, once a week rotation.
Correct.
Okay.
So Brad, is there, I have a question about, is there any advantage to, to breaking up? If, so if we test the staff, but and, but just once a week, is there any advantage to doing half on one day and half on another day? I mean, does it give us any better kind of picture? Or is it, I mean, it's, I know you don't know where the, the
No, no, I mean, there's, there's some logic to that. There's some logic. I mean, I think with the individual testing that, you know, that organization is due, a lot of times they'll divide up their community to, you know, one-fifth each day. You know, it kind of gets, it's kind of, is a little bit better. So, yeah, I think if, if you, if you wanted to do, if you wanted to spread it out into two or three different days, that there's, that would be, I think, net positive.
So just to be clear, Lori, in terms of what you need from us, we don't have a vote on, you don't need an actual vote, right? But you need us to be supportive of this so that you can move forward and execute.
Right.
Okay.
And the scope of what you're supporting, I think, just to clarify. It, it, you know, and my, I'm going to take what court started, I think, and say, I think if we were to spend the next two weeks working with CIC to ramp up staff testing, it would keep us ahead of, it would keep us, it would get us moving if we don't come back. And this is your decision. I'm just offering an opinion. If we wait till two weeks for you to revisit that and see where the state is, you know, we just lose two weeks at a time is a
We don't really lose it anyway, because then, I mean, we're, we're ready when the state ends.
Yeah.
At work is done, right? We're ready to pick up on that end.
Yeah.
If our, if our direction to you was engage with CIC, begin weekly testing as soon as feasible. Until state moves in with the expectation that we would resume on our own at a perhaps lesser level when the state stops its twice weekly. We're in fact then asking you to engage on many fronts. One is CIC, one is internally with the district and the employee groups. And the personnel and another one is with the Ed Fund. And another one is coordination with public health in town and the, the vaccination site. You're working on a number of fronts. If we say move with CIC for the purpose of weekly testing for staff and faculty ASAP.
Correct.
I'm in favor of what you just said.
Having, having this opportunity so clear puts the responsibility squarely on our shoulders. And I would echo what Heather said, this is the right thing to do. It's the best.
Yep. I think that was the state's intent, you know, as, as Mr. Park's reference, there's certainly an intention to keep schools, you know, becoming a safe place and perceived as a safe place. And you're right, the state has left all districts with it hard to turn down, which is good. That, we've been craving some state, state action like this.
Leadership.
So it means, it means Dr. Hunter's going to ask your firm to be quite flexible because and it might, you, you might be fortunate in that regard, given the fact that you may have affiliations with the state that are independent of affiliations with us. That's your business, but you will need to be flexible on our behalf and we appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll sort it. I, I imagine as we start our discussion, we'll know, there'll be more information over in the coming days. So we'll, we'll, we'll work together to make something that's pragmatic.
Okay. I'd like to hear from the other members. I know Sarah would as well. Go or no go?
Yes, thank you. A, a court, just a quick clarification. We don't have to vote on the payment for that two weeks to test the teachers, right? That, that's
Dr. Hunter has the authority to allocate. She wants our guidance.
Well, what about the 18 weeks? Like you even have the authority to spend that 127K if it didn't, it's in fact that.
We have, we have time to come back to that.
Okay. Yes. So we're really talking about the two weeks and then the state's six weeks-ish.
And the likelihood that we would re-engage with CIC and we, we're not imagining anything else at this point. But we don't have anything other than Lori's first, first cut at costs.
And for the six weeks with the state, are we still keeping with staff only or would that be a larger effort?
Whatever they offer up. And I think we heard that the community needs to know 75% participation gets us something meaningful.
So meaning if we didn't get in a survey, an indicator that 75% of families were interested, we wouldn't do it?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it would be unfortunate because we like to get the highest yield we can. If our goal is in fact a, a healthy community and a, a school operation that's no less than what we have now.
And I think the nice thing about the state testing is that it gives the members of the community an opportunity to see how it operates. As Cynthia said, how easy it is, right? And, and hopefully we have similar results as to Wellesley, that it's not, it's catching what needs to be caught. But there isn't, it's not that everybody's being nice, you know, told they pay home. So it, it will hopefully, you know, it'll, it'll be perceived as less impactful as people who might be hesitant to participate.
I have a quick question too. Does the state's cost in this six-week program cover the follow-up PCR tests from the pool testing? Or that would be on the families and?
Yeah, I mean, the state's, the state's encouraging to use these binax tests because I think they have a bunch of them.
Okay. But we wouldn't use this. Right.
I, I, I'm, I just wanted to say I, I, I am in agreement with Dr. Hunter to, to bring this program. I can only see that some students might be not willing to test particular day if they have to work and they don't want to miss day of work. Cause you can't, you know, if you're on a pole, you can't go to work, but it's definitely for the
Alexa, opinion?
I, I, my only thought is with families with respect to 75%, if, if we can't fund it, which that's the big nut, right? That's like the almost 600,000. I, I think the barrier to entry could be cost where you have, you know, family of three at 120 month, dollars a month baseline. Any positive test, you got 80 bucks a test to, you know, for a total of 240, you're talking about $360 for the month. I think that's the only concern I have is cost being a barrier to entry for families if they're asked to self-fund.
My second request, oh, sorry, quick.
No, go ahead, Lori.
My second request tonight is to survey families so we start to get some information because I think that's important to know what target we're aiming for, for dollars and you know, connecting that with CEF, connecting that with fundraising, looking at our cares money. I think we, we need that point even now to better understand what the total cost would be.
Yeah.
But we're not deciding that tonight.
Right. Yeah, we don't need to. That's the gift of the state money. We got this little buffer time window to work with that we just didn't have before.
Fatima, would you weigh in?
Yes, I would be in support of moving forward. And I do have the same concerns as Alexa discussed. And so the survey is going to be important.
And we do have the fail-safe of making clear to Dr. Hunter that we need financing examined and discussed for the post-state portion of, of anything on this.
I assume this is an ongoing discussion that we revisit regularly while we make our way through the stages of it.
So I think Sarah and I, on behalf of the committee, will now say to you, Dr. Hunter, do you have what you need?
I think I do. Thank you.
We want to thank the folks from CIC. We're going to see you again. Thank you so very, very much for reaching out to Lori. It's been invaluable to us. So, so we, we are very appreciative. You, you and I know we've got a long way to go here and this is, this is tough stuff, but thank you.
Right. Thanks, everybody. Enjoy the discussion.
Have a good night.
Yeah, bye.
So, um, we still have quite a bit of an agenda to go. I might propose if people are amenable to a five-minute break.
Don't move.
Do you, see you all at 7:28.
Very good.
Thank you for the break.
So Lori, thank you for setting that up. I thought that was very, very useful.
You're very welcome and I'm just grateful for their initiative.
Yeah. I noticed that Salem is, is doing a lot to offer up their experience to other districts also around testing. They seem to be out in front as well.
Okay, good to know that. We will consult with anyone who wants to.
Superintendent, superintendent released a two-minute video today on what they're doing. I'll send it along.
Okay, super.
How many of us were at FinCom last week, last Thursday? So yeah, some, something more than half of us have seen the presentation. Okay. So that means we're going to go easy on you, Jared.
I'm ready.
I'm not going to go easy on you, Ian.
I'm ready too.
Kidding, we haven't harassed Jared in a while.
All right. Are we at full strength?
Yes.
All right. So we never actually formally recessed, so we will declare that we are underway again with our agenda. Is that okay? So with that, we're on item eight and that is the regional FY22 report with Mr. Stanton and Mr. Rams.
Great. Okay, so a lot of this information you've seen before. There's not many new updates from my December report, my October report, and my July report. So some of the things that I'm going to be talking about is rebuilding the budget in a way where we're rebuilding the school system and next year is sort of a bridge year. And Laurie's going to talk a little bit on that when we get to that slide. Then I'll give you an update on the budget timeline. Some dates have changed a teeny little bit. Year end expenditures in both the general fund as well as our grants revolving gift accounts. You've already seen these. Updated external revenue amounts, governor's budget impact, the FTE budgeted amount, which you have seen before. Just an update on collective bargaining, OPEB, E and D, special education, health insurance. A little bit about the CARES Act. I'm going to be going into that a little bit later in another presentation or actually conversation, I should say. And then the financial impact of the enrollment shift in the high school. So I'm going to throw this slide over to Dr. Hunter right now.
And I'm going to stay at a very high level. I think we actually just touched on some of what this slide is, is intending to communicate. And you're going to hear a lot more of it as we bring you the budgets. Just the, you're aware, there's a lot of unknowns here. We're going to have to take some, some projected, you know, I hate to use the word guesses because I think it's better than guess, but it's not sure thing. So somewhere in there. And really, I think what we're going to end up bringing you is a budget with the most options possible in it, and then continue to narrow down as we get closer to June with Concord Town meeting being in June. So I just, I think it's important to just frame that we're probably going to come in on the, you know, wider ranging set of options, some, and by options, I mean somewhere between where we are now in terms of hybrid and not having kids in full time, all the way to how do we get kids back in full time? And some of that, yes, does depend on what this year turns out to be. And that's a conversation we just sort of touched on and pulled back from. But I think to assume that we're all back full time normally, we can't do that. Certainly in January, we can't do that for September. Maybe as the months go by, we'll be able to get more and more sure of that. Maybe we're going to be more sure of how a whole number of variables start to play out with vaccines and such. So more just the framing of we're going to need to think broader scale and then hone in as we go. So really, that will mean the budgets we bring you initially, we're not really expecting to be the final landing space for the budget. I think in March, you're going to have to vote a number. That's our best, best number at the moment. Knowing we're going to have to keep revisiting it. And if, you know, those of you who heard me say that to the finance committee that, you know, we're not going to be able to put in a warrant and be done with these budgets. And it served us really well last summer, right? To stay at it right up till the latest hour we could. And we built really solid budgets that have us set up in a good place. And we just want to be sure we do that again. Rather than, you know, the fewer unknowns we can, you know, remove from the budget as time goes on, the better. So. All yours, Jared.
So just an update on the budget timeline. So believe it or not, tomorrow's our first meeting with the elementary principals. So the week of the 22nd, though, we're having the middle school and the high school meetings, and we hope to wrap up all the meetings by that Friday, the 25th. I'm sorry, Friday, the 29th. And then that weekend, I get to put all those numbers together and some sort of presentation to you of where we're at on February 2nd. Originally, that was a week later. We moved it up so we can go to the FinCom on the 4th and present that same information again. We may not have a number yet, but we'll have a lot of budget drivers and a lot more information than we have right now. February 23rd, we hope to have a recommended budget as Dr. Hunter just, just said that number will be our highest number probably. And then we're going to have to keep getting that down. Warrant to do on the 19th, so the school committee will need to have a, a budget voted before that time. The, and then April, May, and June, we will continue to update that budget up until town meeting, which is scheduled in Concord on the 13th, and I'm still waiting on a date for Carlisle. This is a report that you have seen before. This is how we ended. We ended with just over sixty seven thousand, almost sixty eight thousand in surplus. This number went to E and D. There were a lot of adjustments throughout the year just because of the year that we had. So so we ended, we ended, we ended with a surplus, which is a good thing. This is the same exact report that you have seen before by the 100 function. And it just goes a little deeper into those numbers. This is how we ended our revolving gift in other balances. You've seen this. We're in a really good spot, especially when it comes to circuit breaker. We're at the max there and then some high balances in the athletic revolving as well as the school launch revolving account. In the school lunch in particular, we did charge funds to the general fund to get that balance as high as possible. Four to six months worth of expenses because we anticipated at the time, we didn't know what to anticipate for FY twenty one. We are starting to run some numbers this year and get closer to closer, closer to a break even point, which is what we're trying to do with, we do not have a full staff at both CPS and the high school. We have reduced some. So we anticipate to carry a healthy balance into FY twenty two. And then some other higher costs. There is the OPEB, which I'm going on another slide. And again, the athletics revolving account. Here is the updated external revenue projection. The only thing that was adjusted here is the chapter 70 money. The governor's budget reduced the, the amount that they initially had by, I want to say it was sixty seven thousand. I'm sorry, fifty three thousand. Sixty seven thousand. But the good thing is, is we're still higher than the 550 that we used as a budget offset. Here it is, the governor's budget, the only impact here on the revenue side again was the was the chapter seventy one. And down here with the assessments, so assessments are in our general fund. Those were adjusted. Here's the budgeted assessment. The governor's new budget decreased the school sending choice as well as the charter school significantly. Kids aged out, kids must have, they left. So we are looking at about an eighty three thousand dollar surplus in the general fund that can offset other expenditures that may go in the red. Here are budgeted FTEs. There has certainly been some additions and subtractions in, in some areas. But we budgeted about two hundred and eight. That does not include our transportation drivers amount. That's about twenty fifteen to twenty FTEs. We will have some sort of formula to show them in the FY twenty two budget. We have some what we're calling student supervisors. Those were the, the drivers of the FTEs and FY twenty one, but those are being charged to the CARES Act. And we're still on discussions as to if those will continue in FY twenty two. Collective bargaining. Here are the six units that are impacted on the region side. Three of these six are, are joint. So five of the six we are going to be negotiating with, the tutors are up next year. And here is our OPEB. And you saw that our, our balance was over five, five million dollars, which is, I keep saying, which is one of the highest of any region in the state. And that is very good news, especially for my future self in 20 years when it's paid off. So it's going to do the towns very, very good.
And I think fiscal watchdogs are very heartened by this as well.
E and D. So the good news right now about E and D, what we anticipated is that we're going to have a max E and D. Has not been certified yet, but here's our estimation of four point nine nine percent. It's just, it's such a good position to be in with the unknowns of the next couple of years. So that's, that's just really, really good news. Special education. Here are the tuition expenditures. As you can see, we are at a three year low. We're, we've done many things in house to keep students in house at both the, at the CPS side, so that's feeding up into the high school. Creating a number of programs. And they've just done such a, such a great job over in that department. I want to say right now, we have about twenty eight out of district students and just three years ago. It could have been almost double that amount. And here are our health insurance numbers. I do want to read a little bit about what I wrote about health insurance. So right now, the, the full impact of COVID nineteen on the health insurance rates is still unknown. The decrease in elective procedures will likely limit the FY twenty two rate increases, which will help the FY twenty two budget. We should know a little bit more in the next two weeks. The initiative programs to encourage low cost health saving accounts has limited the growth cost in recent years. So right now, we're in pretty good position in our health insurance, especially since we carry this cost in the region's budget. The CARES Act, and I'm going to go into this a little bit more. So right now, the, we're anticipated at the region to receive approximately four hundred and twenty three thousand. The two hundred and ninety seven thousand is the initial CARES Act amount. The, this twenty six thousand, two hundred and sixty three is the emergency relief amount. So that's based on the title one. New news has come out in the past week or so about giving additional relief. We're hearing it's going to be about three point seven to three point eight times the this amount right here. The information that I had to the FinCom was, it was based on this two hundred and ninety seven thousand. Although DESI in the state have not come out with the exact numbers yet, I do believe it's going to be based off of this twenty six thousand. But, you know, an additional hundred thousand will be great. We are able now to carry this money originally right before the holiday break. We thought we had to expend the two hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars by December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. They extended that a year. And then this twenty six thousand, as well as this potential ninety nine thousand will be, will be able to carry that into maybe even FY twenty two, FY, FY twenty three. And I think they'll, they'll it won't be as stringent on what we need to use that money on. So hopefully new information will come out in the next couple of weeks. So as I said at the, at the FinCom meeting, and you've seen this, you've seen this slide before, but if there's one takeaway, I would like everyone to come away with. It's this slide right here. And I'll certainly have more illustrations as we get into the budget development and present, presenting that. But it's, it's important to understand the impact increases and decreases on assessments. Between October two thousand and eighteen and October two thousand and nineteen, Concord gained seventeen students and Carlisle lost eight. Total enrollment percentages went from seventy five point two five in Concord and seventy four point seven five in Carlisle to seventy six point one percent in Concord and twenty three point nine in Carlisle. This eight point five percent swing resulted in an assessment increase to Concord of two hundred and seventy two thousand, nine hundred and thirty eight dollars in FY twenty one. Further, as projected, the October one enrollment continued with thirty eight more Concord students and another eight less in Carlisle. This will result in another one point two two percent assessment swing and an assessment impact of four hundred and twenty six thousand, six hundred and forty six dollars to Concord in FY twenty two. And there'll be more information on that on the second. So any questions on the regions? Budget.
I appreciate seeing it and hearing it a second time. Regrettable about the CARES money being title one related, not original grant related, but so be it. The, the enrollment shift has produced again, the sentiment on the part of certain members of the FinCom that we should look at the regional agreement to dampen the one year shifts. But that's a big conversation for another agenda item. But I wanted to note that we did hear that again last week. No surprise. I think it's all quite clear, Jared. Any comments, questions? This is Sarah's meeting to chair. Forgive me, I shouldn't be speaking.
No, I think it's just important that we circulate that timeline. Well, you know, that everybody kind of keeps that, that timeline in mind. Because it's, it's a tight timeline and a lot happening in the next couple of weeks.
One thing I did not have on that timeline is Dr. Hunter and I will be going to the Carlisle FinCom on January twenty seventh. We are on the agenda at seven forty five, and I'll probably be giving this presentation over again.
We might be going a little earlier. I didn't get confirmation of that, but.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'll confirm. It should be seven fifteen.
Yeah, I think it might be seven fifteen. So that'll be good. All the committees will be synced up to the same place in the process and we'll just continue to make that the practice that. And you will get the information first going forward now that we've got the meetings ordered the right way, which is the way it should be.
And as our participant talked about earlier in our testing discussion, there's been a lot of information coming out of that Rockefeller report that there will be a significant, significant higher investment from the federal government in helping schools. So that's another moving thing. And we don't, we don't really know with the, you know, the Senate and House setup that, that might be more likely than it was a couple of weeks ago. So let's have to watch and see what happens. Any other comments, questions?
Just a quick comment to what Dr. Hunter mentioned that there are just so many unknowns at this point of what our costs are going to look like and our budget is going to, what, how our budget is going to be driven by the COVID response because we don't know where we're going to find ourselves come September. So it's not going to be an easy discussion. Hopefully there will be more funding coming our way. And we just need to have a lot of patience and even when it comes to those dates that we just looked at together.
On that note, I'll also comment, can do it later regarding both committees, but since everyone's here. I also felt like, I guess I, I want to appreciate the finance committee and their response to all of this the other night because in presenting all of this uncertainty, I felt like they were very understanding, not only understanding, but supportive of the fact that this is how we're doing it. Because we want to try to get the best information. And so I just wanted to appreciate the supportive back and forth there.
Good point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Ian. I think we can go to policies now.
I'm happy to open this up if you'd like.
Thank you.
Okay. So, really, the Policy Subcommittee met. And these are two of the policies that we looked at. You will recognize them because they've been on your agenda previously. What we did, you'll recall, they came forward and we needed to connect with the attorney, which we did. And then the Policy Subcommittee reviewed that, those recommendations. So the student discipline one, we're actually bringing it back to you with a recommendation of leaving it as-is. There had been a suggestion from a year ago to work through some language changes, some suggested language changes. When the attorney saw them, she suggested we should not go forward with that. It was a little bit of softening of the expulsion, but it's not really expulsion anymore because we owe kids 20, 90 days of service and there's nothing longer than 90 days. But so it was related to, we had suggested language a year ago. The attorneys now looked at it, recommended to the Policy Subcommittee that it stay the same. And now we're just bringing it back to you for closure that the committee, unless you have something you want us to pursue, should, should elect to leave that student discipline policy as-is. It's in good shape. The bullying prevention policy, we had a year ago made some suggested language changes to the definition of cyberbullying. We brought that to the attorney. Her recommendation was to go to the legal definition in Mass General Law, which is what now is included in the, in the draft you have. So that would be the recommendation is to utilize the, the legal definition of cyberbullying. And so that would come back to you for a second reading. We can bring the other one back for a formal vote to leave it as-is in two weeks. And you're welcome to let me know if you have questions. We have a number of others in the pipeline, but these were the ones that were ready to roll.
So I think in two weeks' time, we'll have a recommendation coming from our Subcommittee members, if I'm correct, for adoption.
Well, tonight, I'm bringing you the recommendation on their behalf. They're welcome to speak up at any point here on our discussion.
If I may speak, I really appreciate that Subcommittee meeting, policy. As we were going through the policies, it was really helpful to have Dr. Hunter explain how the policies work in practice. And then listen to the recommendations that were coming from the attorneys. So, understanding both sides, what happens and how the school, how the school works through those situations, gave better understanding and a lot more comfort with the verbiage that is in the, in Massachusetts law.
Great. Okay, thank you. Thank you to the Policy Committee, and we look forward to hearing the outcome of January 20th's meeting, too. So then we'll vote on the recommendation. We vote next, the next meeting. Okay. Fantastic. So back to Jared with some old business now. The CARES Fund update.
Yes. You want me to put the memo up? If that makes sense?
That would be great.
All right. Can you all see that?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So I provided this memo to you last, oop, last week, based on what has been expended to date. And this is for both districts. And to date, we've, we've expended $1,248,915. And that is, here is the different expense categories. So, building alterations, which down below includes the signage, plexiglass tents, scrubbers, air filters, a bunch of the sneeze guards, et cetera, then the cleaning supplies, contracted services, the curriculum supplies, any PPE. And then the remote learning hardware, payroll, which is just the student supervisors and long-term subs. So, we have all of the backup behind this. If you wanted to see that, it's a number of lines. So we will be audited. And so we have to keep, you know, record of, you know, when it was expended, when it was ordered, what school, PO numbers, everything. So, happy to answer any questions on this. And we also, Ian Rames did a nice little pie chart right here. I think the, the town did something very similar. So the good thing, again, the good thing is because they announced that we can carry that money over. We have expended quite a bit, but at least we can now take the available balances. And at the end of the year, we can thoughtfully think, do we want to carry that into the next year? Do we want to offset the FY22 budget with it? Maybe we can bring it over to FY23, et cetera. So it allows us to really, really plan ahead. So happy to answer any questions on this. Happy to send you all of the backup. If that's something you want to take a look at. But I do assure you that Ian Rames is managing this money very, very well. And, and every expenditure that we have will meet the criteria of what the grant was approved for.
Jared, I'll, I'll say it. In hands, other than yours and Ian Rames, I might be quite worried about the haste with which we had to close out the year. But I don't think that happened here. I think that you and your, your team at Ripley were, were very careful and thoughtful about this from everything I can see. And I, I thank you for the care you took, even though you had that time pressure looming over your head for, until the 11th hour. When you refer to one-time costs, are you largely referring to building alterations?
Yes.
That was my, that was my assumption. You referenced one-time costs in your first paragraph. And so I was guessing these were fixed purchases not to be repeated.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that one off the top of my head. So those, those are things like the plexiglass barriers that we had installed, all the HVAC upgrades that we did at the middle schools. Is mostly HVAC and the plexiglass barriers. That's the vast majority of it.
As we hoped. Good. Thank you. Okay.
Any questions? Many thanks, Ian and Jared. I think we can move on to action items. Yeah, yeah. We have three votes tonight. First, you have a motion for the vote to approve staff requests to enroll children.
Should we pull those up to the screen?
Sure.
I, I'm happy to make a motion. While you do that, I will, oops. Jumped around. There we go. Now I can see it again. I will move that they.
Sorry.
Okay.
Get my hands off the keyboard while you're.
I will move that the Concord and Concord Carlisle School Committee is going to approve the following staff requests to enroll their children in Concord Public Schools or Concord Carlisle Regional School District for the 2021, 2022 school year, and that tuition be waived. Lindsay Donahue, Speech Language Pathologist at CIPS, daughter to enroll in kindergarten at Willard. Marcello Pixley, teacher at Carlisle Public Schools, son to enroll in ninth grade at CCHS. Jennifer Rowland, teacher at Carlisle Public Schools, daughter to enroll in ninth grade at CCHS. Danette Sedell, principal, Carlisle Public Schools, daughter to enroll in ninth grade at CCHS. And Lena Smith, teacher at CCHS, daughter to enroll in kindergarten at Willard.
Second.
Discussion?
I want to note that we are not only accepting these students for the next school year, but these will be, children will be members of the school community for the, the school community, excuse me, for the duration of the, of the employment of the, of the parent or guardian.
Roll call vote?
Anderson, aye for both.
Ruth, aye for both?
Aye for both.
Ms. Doug, aye for both.
Mostafi, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for both?
And Wilson, aye for region. Thank you. Our second vote is the vote to accept a donation from the Robbins House.
I might offer just a little background on this. This was actually a grant that the Robbins House posted for application. And we applied primarily CCHS staff. This is some of what is funding our anti-racist work through the Charge Group that you've heard about. And the Robbins House awarded the grant to us to fund that. So it's been a real positive.
Great. I will move that the Concord Carlisle School Committee's vote to accept a donation from the Robbins House, Inc. in a sum of $9,340.
Second.
Session?
Much appreciation. It's important work.
Yes.
The Robbins House that is on the property near the North Bridge is an exceptional educational resource. And if community members have not visited it once or many times, they've, they've missed something. And we look forward to them getting open again and serving their, their mission, which they do so well.
Roll call vote?
Anderson, aye for both.
Ruth, aye for both?
Aye for both.
Mostafi, aye for region. I'm big thank you.
Rainey, aye for both?
Wilson, aye for region. Our last vote of the evening is the vote to accept a donation from Leiter's Environmental.
I'll keep the consistency here. I'll move that Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to accept a donation from Leiter's Environmental, Inc. in the amount of $125.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'll just offer, this is a vendor that we work with who's just giving back, and we're grateful.
Very grateful.
Great. Roll call vote?
Anderson, aye for both.
Ruth, aye for both?
About aye for both.
Ms. Doug, gratefully, aye for both.
Mostafi, aye for region. Thank you.
Rainey, aye for both.
Wilson, aye for region. Thank you. And with that, I think I can call to an end the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee portion of the evening. And leave our Concord colleagues now, if we can have a motion.
I will move that the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee adjourn.
Second.
Anderson, aye for both.
Ruth, aye?
About aye.
Ms. Doug, aye.
Mostafi, aye for region.
Okay, just clarity, it's not both. It's just the region.
Rainey, aye.
Wilson, aye.
We try.
Only two of them. Through there.
Well, Sarah and Eva, you can all go and gloat and have, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you all.
Everybody. Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so the Concord School Committee remains in session. Our item is item 12, and it's the CMS Education Plan. This is a document that informs the design team, the OPM, and the town at large as to the educational needs of the middle school now and predicted for the future, such that the, the design team and the project manager can proceed with the feasibility phase, move into the schematic phase, and produce a design and continue with cost estimating. The education plan has seen a good bit of work of late. And I want to thank Dr. Hunter and the, the entire team that contributed to it. And I want to give you my, my praise for the, the clarity of the teaming philosophy and the teaming approach that is central to the middle school and how it was conveyed in words in this document. I've got a number of highlights from the document that if we had lots of time, I'd like to share. The question, I think, before us, given the hour, is what we want to do with this with the available time. At some point, we do need an official vote whereby this document becomes a, an official document that is then sent over to the town side, specifically the Building Committee and the partners that we're working with, Hill International, and more importantly, for this purpose, SMMA, the design team. My original thinking as to process would be to ask each of us to take a careful two or three minutes and weigh in on what is working particularly well in this document, number one. And number two, are there remaining questions, issues, concerns, or recommendations that would suggest a little more time would be of value? Given the hour, I want to ask you, is that a process that we want to follow at this time? Are you comfortable with that?
I don't need a full three minutes. I can probably give a summary of my thoughts in 30 seconds. Going through quickly is fine with me.
Thank you. So why don't we, why don't we go through it and be mindful of the time? And as a conclusion of one round, we'll check in and see if we want to press ahead with a formal motion tonight, or whether we have generated some ideas that would suggest we benefit from a little more time on this. And I will note that the design team is not at a standstill by any stretch of the imagination. They're using the draft right now. They're under contract with the town. They're performing beautifully. And they have hard data from Justin Cameron and Lori Hunter as well that, that conforms with the education plan. So we, we want to get this done, but we don't have any critical deadline tonight that's going to impact the project. So with that framing, anybody like to start?
Sure. I'll jump in.
Thank you, Heather.
Again, my comments are very quick. What I was looking for from last week was mostly that executive summary that kind of pulls out what's really important in terms of what's working well. Like, that made me very happy to see. I think it's great. I think it focuses on really the two key themes, which is the teaming and the RTI, RTE. I felt like going through the rest of it, that it was all very comprehensive. And I think mostly to me, I see this as a tool for the design team to design us the building that we need. I know that we're not going to get everything that's, you know, ideal in this document, everything that would be, we would want because that would be too expensive probably, but this so far is being used by the design team and I think very successfully. And from what we've heard, the, the feedback is good. They find it very useful. And there's been nothing further that, that they've asked for in terms of insight and detail. So I actually feel like it's pretty good to go.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, and echo that sentiment. I think that the executive summary in particular was of immeasurable value because it really, it focused the document on what we were trying to achieve. And I think the largest takeaway was the teaming approach and that was addressed sufficiently. I don't really have any other comments other than that. The only thing is I know that there was, there were some questions and I don't know if it's necessary for this document about, you know, what are some things that we will be able to do in this building that we've been limited in the past with? Like, are there things that will be enabled by the design? And I know, I think it was Cynthia maybe that even asked that question, if I'm remembering correctly. And that was the only thing that I thought, I was sort of looking forward to maybe seeing if there were some answers to. But again, I don't think it, it's at all prohibitive with the, I mean, the document's great. But that was the only question I had.
Thank you. Be happy to go, but I'd be happy to go last as well. If you pause another few seconds, I'll launch in.
So I'll jump in the, yeah, the only thing that, I'm not a designer, but I would think they'd be looking for is proposed program changes. Outside of the two that you were very clear about or, you know, the teaming approach. But in a more specific way, if there's other proposed changes to RTI or RTE or you were looking for different types of spaces than we currently have, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
So actually, can I just comment quickly? Because I actually thought to both of your questions that some of that was flagged through it.
I'm looking for the word proposed and I find it seven times and I'm looking to find it many more times than that.
Oh, I searched for new and I found it a lot.
Yeah, that was.
More concurrent and proposed.
Yeah. We ended up, and I hear your feedback loud and clear. So we ended up going with, mostly because of the timing of how quick we are trying to turn this around. There was a nice pattern started with currently, dot, 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 and in a new building, dot, dot, dot. So it would have been a much bigger overhaul to go to what you're suggesting. And I totally know why you're suggesting it. It was more of a time matter that because that pattern had already started, we just continued to flesh it out. So if you look, most, I think almost all the sections have, you have to read for it. I get that part. It's not going to jump out at the page that you exactly as if we labeled it a section of, you know, now and later. But I think it's embedded in there. So I, we tried to do the best we could with what we heard that feedback within those couple of days' time we had to work. So it's a good point. I think we'll keep talking on that and reviewing for that.
A last squeeze in a few words. Thank you for the changes. I appreciate the changes that were made so shortly. I want to be mindful of the community's concern about the underused space, considering the cost and mostly the cost through this time. So just mindful of that. And I wanted to recognize that's a concern. Otherwise, it's fine.
So I'll use your unused time. No, just kidding. But I, I would like to read into the record, page 10, "Maintaining Teams Where Students and Educators Are Not Shared or Split Becomes Critical to the Effectiveness and Benefits Outlined in the Research." As a result of the team structure, the organization of a new school should promote and highlight this philosophy while noting that space usage is likely to be somewhat lower than that of a junior high school. I appreciate the, the, the clear declaration here. We're not building a junior high school. We're not trying to achieve that kind of utilization. We're putting the community on notice. This, this is different and we want them to understand why. The next page, "Teaching and Learning Improve Because Horizontal and Vertical Professional Communication Will Occur Without the Barriers of Travel or Pre-made Arrangements", which is language that says we're going to have a lot of communication across educators that is, that is baked into the actual design. Not, not insignificant. I do believe that this is 99% ready. I would hope it gets another 1% attention, but I'm going to follow the will of this group tonight or in the future because I think it's a very suitable document, but I think it would benefit from a little more time. And I'll give you a couple of examples. Page 15, "In Our Current Building Space, Teachers Buy With Each Other in the Musical Performing Groups for Use of the Auditorium." I counter that with the fact that we're not making a clear declaration. We want an auditorium. So we're kind of uncertain here and, and I understand why, but I wonder if a little more time can help us flesh that out. Page 16, I'm confused if we have nine teams by design. We're being told, and I love the addition of these sections called physical space for English, physical space for science. You know, really makes it clear, but then I find a couple of confusing things. This 1% more attention, I'd like it to get. The reference that classrooms should be in close proximity to the library. Well, I'm confused. You can't be close to the library if you're close to your other three core subjects. So are we giving a direction to the design team that will have them shaking their heads? I would also ask and hope that SMMA and Hill International that see hundreds of these education plans have time to weigh in if they have not done so already. I think that's their job. And just a couple of others, just by way of example, page 25. Six or seven world language classrooms, each with a small stage, each with a green screen. And we haven't addressed what's happening with video here, but we have already heard from the community about support for video functions in, in the building. I wonder if we could go a little further there. Final one I'll give you by way of example tonight. I'll skip adult learning, which I'm curious about those spaces, but page 31, "Home Base", so critical, quote, "Given the small group size and facilitation by the entire middle school staff, space will be required in a new school to support this daily meeting." If indeed there are groups of 12 students, are we telling the design team we need to host 56 daily meetings? I don't think so, but I, I think we've got a couple of examples of here of how we're so close. Why don't we go from very good to perfect?
Yeah. And just, do you mind a little?
No, no, but I don't want to burden you with all of this tonight. I don't want you to.
No, and I, and I'm hearing in my head, some of these conversations have happened already and probably I, I'm filling stuff in without realizing it because they know we need space for home base, but they know we don't need 56 small group settings. They know we're going to have to figure it out and get creative. The library, they really wanted that front and center in there because of the words that are missing, of the common spaces. They want the live, we've really suggested the library be as close to the classrooms as possible versus putting the gym next to the classroom. So it's probably the nuance that I think I'm happy to take feedback on and keep, keep tweaking. You know, and I, let's say loud and clear, this, this document is bigger than what we can afford. We know what's in there is not affordable. The, the next round of, you know, hard choices for the building committee very soon here is these hard choices. SMMA is running the space usage numbers as we speak for that purpose. The design team is strategizing options as we speak for that purpose. We know we can't have everything that's in there. The teachers may not all get their own classroom, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, this is what we've laid out for them to then respond to and then we'll make our way through it.
And, and, and you're not telling us that means you're going to rein all of these potentials for the future. You're not going to wring them out of this document. No, that's the, that's the building committee's job to do. Your job is to make clear, what are we protecting today? What are we potentially enabling for the future?
And I think Kristin Olson made a really great point at the end of last week's meeting that what they're going to do as the design phase evolves and phase finishes is actually respond to how they tried to address the need, maybe not in exactly the same way it was outlined in the document, but at least some dialogue on paper happens back and forth so that then the items they don't per se do the way maybe it got described in the ed plan. At least they acknowledge how they strategized it differently if they've had to go to a different plan. So that, that made total sense to me that this would be like the big list. We get through all the, the processing with the committee and then the actual document they write responds to what actually happens. So.
I think I heard you say that, thank you. I think I heard you say that you and the, the team could benefit, albeit maybe in a small way, but could benefit from a little more time. But that doesn't prevent this school committee from moving on it tonight.
Sure.
And I think you'd be okay with, with either.
I would be okay with either. Was it rushed? It was incredibly rushed. So we would always benefit from more time. And you know, one thing I've gotten convinced of with this document is this, you could spend a year on this, two years, years on this document because of what it is. It's so, so huge and, you know, really thorough that you, you could keep going back and back, which I heard loud and clear from the design team. It's meant to be somewhat of a living document that, you know, you keep revisiting as they're designing and, you know, tweaking and, you know, some of the examples you brought up are great reasons why you would go back and clarify or tweak or something like that. So.
Would your team or the members that you'd reach out to be, be amenable to a little more time, a little more attention, a little more refinement?
Of course. Sure. Absolutely. You know, I think we got, we worked really hard to get something in your hands in time for this meeting. Could we polish it up and, you know, really fine tune a little bit here and there, of course, of course.
Two weeks, not one, which would be helpful.
Which quickly turned into, you know, two days, really.
Yeah.
As we left here Tuesday night and we're trying to get it to you for Friday, which turned into Saturday, it really whittled it down very quickly. So we divided and conquered and, you know, each, it's some of what you're seeing is the fact that people worked in separate settings and then we pulled the document together and you're still, I can, I know you're craving the one voice through it and.
Well, that's come a long way. In my opinion, that's come a long way. It's not, it, it has an editor clearly.
Yes, that, it's come a long way and we, we did a better job last week of saying, here's a common way we're going to approach this. And you saw some benefit from that. So. And the last piece, I'll say, we had a lot of feedback from your meeting, from, you know, some things that got sent to me, a couple of building committee members. I don't know that there was a way to take all of it and do every single thing people mentioned because it was a lot. And there were a couple of times it was just totally in alignment with each other. So if, if we missed a real priority for you, by all means, tell us that. Because we did have to make some quick judgment calls without an opportunity for dialogue. So by all means, if there's a missing major thing, keep saying so.
So.
I'm going to ask you to maybe look at is the request to have that second PE space and better define what that is because I, I've seen the, I will call it a, that second gym at the high school turned out not to be what the, what we thought it was going to be. And, you know, should we potentially look at one large gym that you could divide into thirds? And get a lot more out of it than the second PE space? Or do you really need this smaller space for other reasons? So that's my question.
That's one of the things that I think we would be very wise to look into because that's one of the more, more dominant community voices we heard a year ago. In regard to that, our language on page 40 reads, "In the new building", quote unquote, "we need a third teaching space to accommodate three grade levels." That implies we're teaching three grade levels PE at the same time. I'm not sure that's necessarily the case. And we were avoiding the other conversation appropriately so in a sense, in that it's largely a community conversation. But if it's going to be a big community conversation, I think it obligates us to ask you, Dr. Hunter, to what degree could we make educational use out of a different configuration? If, if we find we can accommodate, that's a stretch. If we can accommodate financially the desires of that part of the community that we've heard from.
Good.
So if we don't hear a motion tonight that requires a decision on our part, the implication is that we would expect to benefit greatly from a little more time and attention. And the obligation would be on each of us to make any communications independently to Dr. Hunter that you believe you need to communicate or share, or that you think she needs to hear. And I think we're obligated to say that should come very, very quickly. I would like to see that come her way by the end of the week. If it's the will of the committee to have her go back. Let's not make it hard for her. We're making it hard enough.
I would make two quick comments on that. If we are going to put it off, I think that's fine as long as we commit to voting on it at our next meeting, I think.
Yes.
And just to your point, Court, I want to repeat that even if there are places where maybe it seems unclear because we're saying we want all this, you know, classrooms together, but near the library. I don't want to take out some of those pieces, even if they're contradictory, because to me it speaks to the goals. So, you know, the, as Lori said, the designers will look through and say, okay, well, we couldn't do exactly what you said because those two contradict. But here's how we addressed your goals. So to me, if there's some ambiguity there because things contradict, that's actually okay with me if it expresses the goals that we're trying to achieve. So I, I just want to make sure we don't pare back the plan because it doesn't seem realistic. Because we still want to express those goals.
Thank you. I think that's really important. Yeah. What looks contradictory, that's one, one term. The other term might be we have competing, competing needs and desires. And that's why we need a superb design team to work with a superb superintendent to, to sort that out.
Right. And maybe there's a way to address both of those goals. We just don't know what it is because we're not architects.
And I will share with you my commitment, which Dr. Hunter already knows and recognizes. And that is that although we may not act on this tonight, yes, it should be our full expectation to close this chapter in our next meeting.
Good. Thank you.
Hearing no motion and I, I thank you for this. I think we're going to be, we're very pleased with the result. I think we'll be more pleased next time around with a tiny bit of attention. Thank you. We're going to go back to Mr. Stanton and.
I have a quick interruption. I know Heather said that she would do her liaison report from the building committee and.
Ah, good, good for you.
I have some questions about, so if Heather has a quick report, that would be great.
Oh, just over. I actually didn't even meant, I mean, I had a formal part as much as we were going to talk about it. But I guess the, the quick high level report is that we did have our second meeting to really reengage. I would say the first two meetings have really been kind of a, let's figure out where we were and establish the plan going forward. going forward. We do have a building committee report that will be going out soon that explains this, but at this past week's meeting, the designers took us through a good high level kind of review of our goals for the building committee and what we want to accomplish over the few months, the next few months. So from a community perspective, I will let everyone know that we are going to be having some community forums soon, very soon. In fact, we're trying to finalize a date the last week of January. So that we will announce that as soon as we have the time and date finalized. We'll also be putting out a, not just a building committee update, but kind of a, we're working on kind of a flyer type form that's a an update after the pause to make sure that we get information out well. And then we're looking at the next community forums being, let's see, February, right after the break and April, right before the April break. And those are all lined up with the overall process timeline where we can present what we have as information, get feedback from the community, go and rework, you know, basic plans into site plans and and take all that feedback, bring it back to the community for for the next round of feedback, et cetera. That's the the general outline. In addition to the open community forums, I know that the design subcommittee led by Court is planning on some focus groups as well, specifically to address these big questions like gymnasium and auditorium. Talk more about that. But that's our overall high level update.
And they could well be woven into these forums. None of that's been planned. That that planning starts Friday with the design subcommittee.
Okay.
And then we have to coordinate with all the other, all the other subcommittees.
And I, Heather, I happened to read the original charge for the building committee and it did specifically state that the building committee would report to the school committee and to the select board quarterly.
That's true. Now, the, we have a select board representative on the building committee. Matt Johnson is now doing that. So, and actually, it's a good point. We'll make sure he's doing this, but we set up from the beginning that we would regularly update the school committee, which we've been doing much more than once a quarter, and that the select board representative on the school committee would update the select board.
I'll ask that. I think very soon we should have a formal update from your building committee chairs to the, come to the school committee. Because honestly, I'm still really confused about the status of the project. And I think it would be good once, I know, once you have perhaps your next meeting, that they come and sort of give us an update because you've had leadership change on your chair.
Oh, I should have mentioned that on that. Thank you. So many, so many moving pieces. Tim Holt, who was a co-chair, has had to step down for personal reasons. And Pat Nelson, who was our vice chair, has been good enough to step up into the co-chair role. So she was nominated by the building committee and voted in as the second co-chair at this past meeting. Thank you, Cynthia. And yes, we can certainly look at dates to have the building committee co-chairs come present to the school committee and the select board. So we'll, thank you for that note and we will.
Do we know if there's an open seat on the building committee or we're not clear yet?
We're not clear. We're not clear yet on that. One other note to follow up on this, and that is the the co-chairs will be meeting with the FinCom January twenty one. FinCom requested it hours later. The reply was, yes, we'd be delighted to. So there there is the readiness to do do all of this outreach, but thank you for bringing this up. I that fell off my radar. I'm guilty. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Cynthia.
Okay, so that allowed us to keep Jared around for a few extra minutes, but we don't mind waiting and you're a good sport. So thank you. You're on fiscal twenty two CPS. You're on mute, my friend. Jared.
Of course, I'm a visitor. Good timing, always.
We can reassess where you.
I am on bed duty, but that's later.
Tonight.
I get to give this presentation. All right, I will be. Okay, I will be very brief. So sort of the same type of agenda as the region. I'll give you the end of year expenditures, which you have seen. And usually for the new members, I normally give this report to you all in October, which I did before. So just really quickly, the the reason we do these reports is the 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 finance committee from Concord gives a guideline letter to us every summer. And instead of responding to the guideline in an email, which was a response for many years, we typically, well, the past two years, we've decided to do a fall budget book and then we present that to the the finance committee. Obviously, due to the pandemic, we did not do a fall budget book, and this is the presentation that we gave them to try and answer as many questions as possible. I'd like to get back to that fall budget book because I give a lot more detail in it. So again, you'll see the end of year expenditures in both the the general fund, the gift accounts, revolving accounts, et cetera. The F T Es that were budgeted, the status of the collective bargaining agreements that impact just the CPS side, special special education expenditures, the capital plan, and then the CARES Act, which you've already seen. So this is just to recap how the year ended. We were able to exhaust the general fund and spend right to zero. There are some, certainly some adjustments and just due to the nature of how last year played out. This is the same exact report except by the one hundred function. Here is the end of year balances. We will able, we were able to max out our circuit breaker. And if you do remember, all spring and even the beginning of the summer, I wasn't confident in that, but we were able to carry over eight hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and thirty four dollars, which was the max, which is going to set us up for this year and hopefully next year. That is something that I I want to 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 keep as much in there as possible. Because we are doing so well with our tuitions and keeping students in district, our circuit breaker reimbursement rate is going down. So it won't be as high as the eight oh eight. It's going to be in the six hundreds most likely, but I do anticipate to what's only January twelfth. My goal is to carry over the max to set us up for F Y twenty two. Another revolving account that may be jumping off the page here is the food service revolving account. Little bit higher than it was to start the year. We did also charge general fund expenditures for food service to go into the year with a healthy balance. So overall, we're in, we're in really good shape for for the situation that we're in. The F T Es, again, budgeted, it had, we have had some additions and subtractions, mostly in the in the tutors area. We did hire some student supervisors and also this budget or this F T E sheet does not include the transportation F T Es. Like I said in the previous presentation, I do anticipate to start to carry those. Collective bargaining, all five units are up on the CPS side. Three of them are joint. We are starting our negotiations. We're on schedule to start on the nineteenth with the CPS building service workers. And then we hope to stay on the collective bargaining schedules to to make sure that we can have all ratified contracts by June thirtieth. That is the goal. Special aid tuitions, this slide almost speaks for itself. Our tuitions are going down. The special aid department, Ruth Grooby and her staff have done a wonderful job creating programs, keeping kids in district. We have about twenty two students right now that are out of district, which I think I can say quite confidently that was double when I was here in F Y eighteen or nineteen. And so our tuitions are continuing to go down, which again will mean the circuit breaker will go down. And then just a recap of the the capital plan. We anticipate to continue to stay within the town manager's budget of nine hundred thousand. This previous year, we requested eight hundred and thirty thousand. We are starting to get the plan ready for the E R U energy recovery units for all of you that do not know what that is for, get it lined up for the spring and in summer. And we should be in pretty good shape. And then here is just a recap of of the CARES Act. And again, this four hundred and twenty seven is significantly higher than the the, was it a hundred, hundred and twelve thousand, give or take, we're anticipating it to high school. So that is, that's that's, that's good. We can, hopefully, we can use that going into next year or cover the pool testing, et cetera. This one hundred and twelve thousand, we have until the September of twenty twenty two to spend that money. So the goal is right now to hopefully be able to leave that until that time and use it to offset or the unknown of the F Y twenty three budget. The town gave us an updated number of four, one hundred and twenty six thousand, eight hundred and twenty five dollars. They needed two hundred and seventy three thousand for testing that we were not going to hold back and and not give that money to back to them. So we ended up thankfully receiving that one hundred and twenty six thousand dollars from the town.
Question, Jared?
Yes.
You knew what I was going to say. Could you go back one slide? The emergency relief, is this telling us that Title One monies at the high school are more significant than at CPS?
Of the way around. So we received more money, more Title One money at CPS than the high school.
Well, that would stand to reason, but that relief two of four twenty seven here, was it, what was it on the?
It was.
I'm sorry. You're right. Yeah, it was ninety nine, wasn't it on?
Give or take. Yeah.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Again, this is an estimated amount. I used three point eight, three point eight times the one hundred and twelve that hasn't, and that's why it's TBD. I'm pretty certain we're going to, we are going to get that. And we may get additional money. But again, I I I I don't have any additional information as of yet. And as soon as I do, I'll I'll report that out.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry. I needed to double check.
So Jared, I have a question. The the document that you presented during the regional meeting with CARES Act monies divided between C C R S D and CPS? So I totaled the conquer column and the total was nine hundred and nineteen, two thousand and three.
Let's see.
So I don't need it tonight, but there's just between that, I'm trying, if you could give us a breakdown as to what was not funded in the CARES Act money, because obviously there's a lot of things that were not and where they went. How how they were funded out of the operating budget, right?
Yeah, I can do that. And so, and I'll certainly get that. There were, so when that budget, there's been a lot of budget savings, such as tutors lines that have funded, such as even other lines that have funded something. So I'll be able to figure that out and 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 give you that.
The town also said that they funded the laptop lease for CPS. What was that? Can you want to state that one?
Yep, that was the, the, we started a new elementary laptop lease this year. So the first lease payment they picked up in their grant.
So that, what that did is it allowed me to move that money to to pay other, our long term subs have been a big driver, a big cost. So to 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 pay off that.
The other piece too is these expenses are, they're straddling fiscal years. There's a lot of stuff that we bought last spring. So it's, it's, yeah.
Just for the public, we did, the Concord School Committee did vote to fund the leases out of the operating budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, you funded the general fund total amount.
And then some of that did get shifted to CARES Act. Is that my?
Correct. Yeah. And there are things that certainly were potentially funded in the general fund that are CARES Act eligible that was moved to through the CARES Act, which would free up things that that we didn't know about, such as particular softwares or other things.
Right. And I know there's more money coming and I guess I'm just going forward, looking at when we kind of return to normal, whatever that is. And what, what, which of these things might be recurring and then we would have to be concerned about?
That's a good question.
You know, additional, future additional expenses that we might need to start thinking that we need to pull back on. You know, we can't have all the, you know, do we need all the remote learning software going forward? Maybe we do, but we just need to justify it. So.
Yeah, I think it's worth, do you mind, Jared? We're definitely in that mode as we bring you F Y twenty two, twenty two. So Jared and Kristen are working at a really way deep level to gather all the software, look what's duplicated, put a process in place so we tighten up all of that. Look what's really COVID related versus what's more typical. We're trying to really work through all of that. And you're totally right on the recurring funds and CARES Act. I don't know, any of you who lived twenty two thousand nine, ten, where we all got subsidy money that bought us a year or two and then it dried up and we all had to use it for recurring funds because there wasn't any other money. You know, you live that the hard way and you really try to avoid it going forward. So even if they've picked up the lease and the town was really generous with us to say they had some funds available in their CARES money. And of course, everything's so prescriptive, we all could only apply things that fit the definition. But that said, we know we have to carry that in the budget going forward because the lease is the lease and we can't not have a budget to support that. So you're, you're very right, is my long way of saying that, Cynthia.
In one, just the quick things, just because we, so we we had to identify that amount of money by December thirtieth. Yes, they told us on right before the holiday, but at that time we had a, we did not want to not be able to expend all of it. So that was an eligible cost and that's why we did move that over.
Yeah, okay.
Only to then get more time on.
Three days to.
Jared, just to repeat or emphasize, the only slide that changed in the last five days was the emergency relief cares numbers.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
And that's, yeah, that's it.
Good. Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? You've got our our gratitude for pushing so hard so long today on our behalf and on the district's behalf. It's a big ask for the school personnel to to, what should I say, suffer through a four hour meeting, but you've done so magnificently. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Really important topic. Thanks to your kids for waiting for bedtime.
You couldn't get me out of it.
Okay, that's going the wrong direction. You can pretend you, whatever you want with the door closed.
Strike that from the record. All right. Do we have, with with thanks to all for your stamina and all the prep that was necessary to bring this to us, Ian, Jared and Lori? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
And my request for discussion will be. And my request for discussion will be met with silence. Those in favor, please.
Anderson, aye.
Booth, aye.
That aye.
Face that aye.
Randy, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton.
Good night, Tom. Good night, Cynthia.